Hey, all set Laura?
About to stream. Lou, make sure you mute yourself.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead Kevin.
Okay, thank you Laura, we're all set to start. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town and Land Management Board and zoning commission meeting for May 11th, 2020. This meeting is being held via remote meeting software. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme?
Present.
Mr. Khan?
Here.
Mr. McPartlin?
Here.
Mr. Derpino?
Here.
Mr. Oster? Mr. Oster?
I've unmuted myself, here.
Okay, great. Ms. Shenfield?
Here.
Chairman Walsh?
Here. Okay, we have the approval. Okay, we have the approval of the minutes on the March 9th, 2020 meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
How can I put this on?
Motion.
And by the way, it was Mr. Khan?
I'm getting both places.
Yes.
If you guys aren't, excuse me, if you're not speaking, please mute. Alright, and except for the board members, Mr. Khan, did you make that motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, I made a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. Minutes, motion to approve by Mr. Khan, do I have a second?
I'll say.
And who's that, please?
I don't know.
Here's me.
Chris.
Chris, okay, yeah, it's, when there's multiple people talking, I can't hear. So, seconded by Mr. Laflamme, is there any discussion at all on the minutes, any changes at all? I had none, they looked pretty good. I assume that was Ms. Foti that did those Laura? So they look pretty good.
Yeah. It was. Leslie did have a typo that we will fix, last name.
Okay, minor typo? Okay. No other comments, seeing none, let's approve the minutes by signifying by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none opposed for the March 9th, 2020 meetings, we'll approve those, thank you. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move right to privilege of the floor. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Robertson.
Okay, so, Coon, would you like to start?
Yeah, sure. So first, thank you Chairman Walsh and the planning board for giving me the opportunity to speak about the, I think it's Mr. Lee C's four lot subdivision over at Vintenso Drive. I think the last time I spoke, and I forgot, it's maybe sometime in, maybe even in February. So then the next update I got for the development of that lot behind my house, it's a, it's a letter dated March 5th, 2020, by Mr. Brett Steenberg. And attached to that letter is also a drainage calculation report. So I look at that report and the letter, and I have two concern. One of the concern is that, I think at that February meeting, Mr. Steenberg did imply that he would provide some kind of stormwater practice to manage the stormwater runoff, especially from house number two. That's the house or that lot right behind Mr. Harrison's property. And I look at that that drainage plant and the sketch plant that provided by Mr. Steenberg, attached to that same letter. And, and also the letter that the, that Mr. Steenberg had provided. And according to the calculation, it looks like that stormwater practice, which is a bio-retention basin, and the way I understand the bio-retention basin work is that it would take all the excess stormwater runoff from the impervious cover created by this new house. And the idea is to store those excess stormwater runoff, not let it spread out to the surrounding land or area. And basically have a lot of vegetation designed to absorb as much of the stormwater and also evaporate transpire into the atmosphere. But then according to the calculation, it looks like that that bio-retention basin can only manage the two-year storm. And the so-called ten-year storm, and a hundred-year storm, is not able to really manage all those excess stormwater. And I, I think most of you know, but in case some other people might not understand, a ten-year storm doesn't mean that a storm only happened once every ten years. The ten-year storm is really just a statistical way of describing a type of storm that has a 10% probability of happening in any given year. So a ten-year storm is really, if you have twenty storms event in a given year, that likely two of those storms is going to have that kind of, you know, rain quantity or storm quantity that this bio-retention basin not going to manage. So I just needed, well, what I just suggested that that needed to be looked at again and one possible way of managing it is to put it under drain by the bio-retention basins to allow any excess stormwater that I'm not able to manage by that bio-retention basin and convey that to a stormwater system so it doesn't impact the surrounding neighbors and roadway. Interestingly, I got a copy of the Western and Sampson review of the drainage plan submitted by Mr. Steenberg. Looks like that there is a more detailed plan that have been submitted, which I really did not have the time or the opportunity to look it up and look at that one. But according to Western and Sampson's review, it, it sort of echoed my, my concern. And if I look at, if you look at especially comment number 26 to 30 from the Western and Sampson letter, it basically said that I'm sorry. Nope. I need to correct myself, it's actually, it's comment 16. Comment 16 that basically implied that that bio-retention basin, I mean, I have sized the property and that a perforated underdrain pipe is needed. So that's all I coincide with my original thought that I think that those, that bio-retention basin really should be looked at again and properly sized and decide to handle those ten-year storm and maybe even the hundred-year storm. And then my second concern is that that same letter that Mr. Steenberg had provided, it suggested that house number three and four, lot number three and four, there need to be, you know, just nothing really needed and that any excess stormwater is just going to drain to Antonio Drive, which is where I live. And by the way, I forgot to mention that I live on 2513 Antonio Drive. And my next-door neighbor, 2517 Antonio Drive is Mr. Bastian's house. And and when I look at that sketch plan, according to the contour, and it's actually, I can see that from my house into the back, yeah, too. There's really a low spot there that any excess stormwater generated from house one, two, and three, if it's drained toward the Antonio Drive, it's really just going to end up, especially behind Mr. Bastian's house, a little bit behind mine. So when there is heavy rain nowadays, I can actually see more ponding of the water and it take longer for the water to evaporate. So if more houses is going to be built, I know it's only like two or three more, but if all those excess stormwater is going to drain toward Antonio Drive, I think there's going to be even more ponding of the water after each storm. And Mr. Steenberg said in this letter that there is eleven acre between those lots or the new houses that would be built and Antonio Drive. And I, I don't think that makes sense because those four lot together, each one of them was like about two acres or so. If you add them all together, that may be about ten acres there. No, actually less. It's a little bit less than ten acre. But then after you build those houses, the driveway, that couldn't be eleven acres there. So I think it's probably closer to, you know, five, six, maybe seven acres. And what my concern is that those excess stormwater is going to create more ponding behind Mr. Bastian and my house. And that there need to be a way to better manage those excess stormwater. Especially, I think, probably know by now that the soil doesn't really drain that well behind our houses. And then when I look at the Western and Sampson's comment, and this is where comment 26 to 30 comes in, that it basically said that the detailed plan doesn't really provide the the drainage analysis for lot three and four. And so I echoed my same concern that there really needed to be a little bit more, I guess, analysis and look at how those excess stormwater generated from lot three and four is going to be managed and not ends up just ponding behind Mr. Bastian and my house. And then last but not the least, comment number 23 of Western and Sampson's letter, I guess I didn't know that, but it said that the proposed limit of disturbance is 2.5 acre. What that really mean is that now this development really need to comply with the DEC general permit for stormwater construction activity. And that it really needed a full stormwater pollution prevention plan. And that mean that the post-construction stormwater management really is needed. And I guess unless somehow this plan is changed such that it doesn't trigger or trip these stormwater permit requirements, what this all plan to is that the stormwater management practices adjusted and proposed by Mr. Steenberg is just insufficient at this point. So that's really what I would lay upon now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Coon. Next up, then I am on line is Doug McFadden.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Good, okay. So Coon and I are going to have somewhat the same concerns, but here's where I, here's my perspective on this. I just talked to my neighbor George Lefter today. He lives at 1385 Row Road, right across the street from me. And I confirmed again, he said that when there's a heavy storm, he is getting runoff from home number one. I also, and Laura has seen this, but I have taken photos and videos of when we have a heavy rainstorm and there's definitely water coming down on the, if you're facing the Lee C property, on the left-hand side, there's a water coming down. So, and Coon said this, but I want to say it again. He is saying that both himself and Sally Bestian, Mrs. Sally Bestian, are getting, have low spot and they're getting water, stormwater runoff from home number one. So my first point is, I think that not only should homes three and four be studied with respect to drainage, but I think home number one should be added. In fact, all four homes should be, be looked at. And I don't know whether the stormwater pollution prevention program is the, is the right method, but I would suggest that there's more, more work that needs to be done. We've already talked, Coon's already done a good job of addressing the drainage study on homes three and four, the fact that Mr. Steenberg made a general statement that this wasn't necessary to do homes three and four, but we don't really agree with that, and I'm not going to reiterate Coon's comments because we agree on that. With respect to the bio-retention basin next to home two, which is going to be next to the Harson property. We, from what I can see of the drainage analysis that was done by Mr. Steenberg, we are going to have some issues with water coming out of that retention pond. Well, a retention pond is a good idea. And it's, it's a better solution than they had on home number one. I think that it's either got to be enlarged or we've got to do the underdrain that, that Coon suggested and also the town designated engineer suggested too, that an underdrain might work if you, if it's not going to be practical to enlarge this bio-retention basin. And there was another comment, but I think Norm Schilling's on the line, so I'm going to let him take a cut at that one. But so, in summary, since we're, we're really not, in my opinion, homes one through four are not, we're not done with respect to a study. What about, again, considering a redo of the stormwater pollution prevention program for all four homes? And do this, I think correctly. And that's really the comments I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's, there's a cellphone that's connected to our meeting, whose phone number ends in zero five. Can you please mute yourself? I, I can't mute cellphones without it being really complicated. You need to mute yourself on your cellphone, just hit your mute button on your regular cellphone, and that should help with the feedback that we're getting. Whoever ends in zero five. Okay, so I did see Norm Schilling on the line, if you want to go ahead, Norm?
Yeah, Norm, you'll need to unmute yourself, Norm.
So if you just, I can see you, if you can just hover your cursor or click on your screen and you see that ribbon that comes up, and it'll say Planning Board and Zoning Commission, and then in the middle, there's like a microphone button. It should be like a red circle. If you click it, you should be able to unmute yourself. So there'll be a set of screen.
I got it, I got it, yay! You know what's really sad? This is the high point of my day, being in sheltered, alright? It's a seven o'clock meeting. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I sent in a, I guess a, you know, a note to Laura. It related to item 19 in the TDE's evaluation. That said, let me quote this, "Please provide operation and maintenance manual for the proposed bio-retention area and other associated stormwater infrastructure." And my comment on that is, well, that may all be well and good. I'll tell you, when you get electronic equipment, you get a, you will get a, you know, a manual, you throw it in the garbage or you throw it in the round file, alright? To my, you know, to my way of thinking, it's reasonable to expect that because of settling, silting, leaf cover or whatever, that the bio-retention area will deteriorate over time. So my question is that who has responsibility for the operation and maintenance of the bio-retention area? Is that the township? Is it the property owner? And if it is the responsibility of the property owner, what enforcement mechanisms are there to ensure that the maintenance is performed? Look in the back here, you know, we have a grate at the terminus of the creek in the backyard here that, for Row Road, down at the bottom of the Row Road, and you know, that grate works fine, but you've got to maintain it, you've got to clean it out. Same thing I think is going to apply to the bio-retention area. So my question is, who does it? Who's responsible for taking care of that? If it's the township, that's another question, is how do you really determine, you know, when you go on? Can you go on the property? How are you going to test? How are you going to look to whether or not it's working as planned? Has maintenance been provided? Or if it's the responsibility of the property owner? My question is, is, are there enforcement mechanisms that says that to ensure that the maintenance is performed? So that's my comment.
Thanks, Norm.
Can you see me?
Yep, I, yep.
Oh my God, I should have shaved, I'm so sorry. Okay. Okay, God bless, God bless.
Okay, thank you. Um, Norm, can you go ahead and mute yourself again? You can stay on the call, just stay muted.
Okay, okay, here we go. Oh.
Oops, he just hung up, that's alright, he can rejoin. So I don't have anybody else that I saw on the line under public hearing. If there's somebody who joined, I know I sent the invite out to a couple of people that would like to speak, please let me know.
Okay. So does anybody else want to speak under privilege of the floor?
Okay. My, so Kevin, if somebody still joins that wants to speak, it's okay, I'll start reading. And then, you know, if anybody, if anybody's missed or anybody jumps on, that's fine.
Okay.
So, under the governor's rules, we're trying to make our public meetings as open as possible. And if you can't attend the video conference, you're allowed to submit your comments. I have quite a few comments now that I will read into the record for people who wanted to speak under privilege of the floor. This first one is from Jean Suzanne Kaimora. Says, "I am writing to express our strong objection to the proposed extension of Windsor Drive to River Road. As many of the residents of Windsor Drive have written, we are very much concerned about safety issues related to increased traffic and the type of traffic, as well as the impact on the nature of our neighborhood and the value of our property. I have often heard that a justification for this extension is the conference of plan. In fact, this is not true. The 2013 Conference of Development Plan for the Town of Niskiuna says on page 39 that there may be an opportunity to connect Old Niskiuna to these facilities, parentheses, Blatnik Park and Little League Fields, by extending the Windsor Drive multi-use path to River Road. A multi-user path extension was originally part of the planned Windsor Drive extension. However, the president, the presence of wetlands have made further development in this area non-economical, and the road extension unlikely to be built. Given the importance of this neighborhood link, the town should work with the current landowner and identify possible extension of the multi-use path. Clearly, a decision to extend Windsor Drive would violate the recommendations of the 2013 Conference of Plan." They lived on 4029 Windsor Drive. This comment's from Daniel Polishuk. "I am writing today to oppose the town's plan to extend Windsor Drive into River Road. As part of Mr. Bazoin's residential construction project, I believe this will create multiple problems. As we had guessed initially, this will significantly increase traffic in our neighborhood. Additionally, and quite as expected, this increased traffic will devalue our homes. In writing this letter, I reviewed the recent traffic study from Creighton Manning, as well as the assessment of our homes from Old Kinderhook Appraisal Service, if such an extension is created. All studies came up with alarming results. As a town planner, I believe one of your most important duties is to maintain safety and quality of life for the local residents. To paraphrase the town plan mandate, town plan changes should not be made in such a way that they endanger the residents, or worse, in quality of life of the residents in the affected areas. According to the recent traffic study, we will have anywhere from 25% to an almost 30% increase in Windsor Drive traffic. It will amount to almost 1,000 extra cars a day. In fact, this may change the character of our local road to the next more busy designation of Collector Road. I do not pretend to be an expert in traffic, but this does not sound like something I want to see zooming past my window. And to not forget, just past the town hall is our local high school, serving all the regional middle schools. We are told they are at capacity and need more space. And now we will have 1,000 additional vehicles going by the high school. This will make both morning and afternoon traffic issues even worse. Further, according to a recent assessment, our home values may go down from a low of 10% to a high of 30%. If our assessed value goes down by 30%, so will the tax assessment. This will negate any possible future increase in tax revenue that a new development is hoped to achieve. If this plan comes to pass, I and many of my neighbors will be getting a new appraisal. We will not continue paying over $20,000 in taxes alone for property that has lost 30% of its value, through no fault of our own. Neither of these scenarios are good for the neighborhood, the people living there, or the town. If the town is out of touch with the neighborhood needs, it needs to evolve to properly reflect the needs and wishes of the people living on the streets directly affected. As we have mentioned time and again, the new development, and in particular, the cut-through proposed, is detrimental to our neighborhood. It only benefits the developer. Final thoughts. Besides the fact that we are going to be subject to hundreds more vehicles passing our homes, the plan to merge into a 50 mile per hour traffic is at best naive and at worst dangerous. On page two of the traffic report, we read 85, "The 85th percentile operating speed on River Road was measured to be approximately 51 miles per hour. At these speeds, it would be like merging onto a highway. How would daily traffic accidents benefit anyone? And worse, there is an actual plan to have pedestrians cross the road that is basically highway speed. Traffic study noted that conditions are so bad that to even get it approved according to the current regulations, a new line of sight is mandatory to allow drivers and pedestrians enough time to react. I can already imagine myself standing in the middle of River Road, allowing a pedestrian to cross, only to get rear-ended at 50 miles per hour by a distracted driver. Nightmare." And one, and one's town puts their okay on this plan and marks the road with a pedestrian crosswalk. This will certainly open the town to fairly predictable litigation. You will have knowingly allowed and encouraged pedestrians to cross a dangerous road after obtaining a traffic study stating that it is not enough to just paint the road to have a safe crossing. This will also increase the actual volume of pedestrians crossing River Road. If someone actually thinks this is a good idea, I want them to try to cross River Road, or better yet, to try and cross with their kids in tow. This is not a walking path, and pretending like it is will lead to injury and death. We have been led to think this will be a retirement-type community. Driving out onto River Road under these conditions would not be my choice, and certainly will not be for anyone living in that development. So not only will we have a significant incremental traffic increase from the historical data, but there will also be additional traffic from this new development. In summary, this development, and in particular, the Windsor extension, will bring more danger to local community by a 30% or more increase in traffic. Our home values will go down, and the new community will be in perpetual peril of traffic accidents. Please consider not connecting Windsor Drive to River Road, as well as more, as well as a more thorough plan to keep the new neighbor safe. Sincerely, Dan Polishuk. Next comment is from Robert Green. "My name is Robert Green, and I lived at 4012 Windsor Drive for five years with my wife Melissa and two sons. We absolutely love the neighborhood and the town of Niskiuna. The type of neighborhood we live in is why people want to live in Niski. And it is also the source that befundles me as to why this connector remains under consideration. I've seen the traffic study from Creighton Manning..." Sorry, guys. "I've seen the traffic study from Creighton Manning, and it's clear that we will be subject to a considerable increase in traffic on Windsor Drive if the connection is approved. The traffic volume, safety concerns, and noise, and the reduction of home values significantly impact every resident on Windsor. And for what are we being asked to sacrifice? A little over 60 seconds shaved off commutes. It's a meaningless, a meaningless improvement. Additionally, these trips would be diverted from otherwise utilizing existing traffic patterns that are well-established, avoid densely populated neighborhoods, and have proven themselves to be safe. Am I missing something here? The traffic report and simple common sense provide the answer to the cost-m利fit analysis. In fact, the authors of the traffic report question the logic of suffering the costs for such minimal benefit. They make the statement twice. The planning board will need to determine if travel time benefits associated with this direct connection will outweigh any perceived impacts to quality of life as it relates to increased traffic through this predominantly residential area. We are against the connector and respectfully request that the town planner, town board, and supervisor take the opinions of the residents of Windsor Drive and facts from the traffic report seriously, and deny a connector from Windsor Drive to River Road. Thank you, Robert and Melissa Green." The next email is from Danielle Bigali. And she submitted a letter and also two appraisals. I'll just talk about them really fast when I'm done with the letter. This letter, whoa, sorry, electronic. "This letter is being sent to address our concerns regarding the proposed connection of Windsor Drive to River Road. We ask that you consider the following points, given this connection has major implications and an adverse impact to the residents of Windsor Drive. The proposed connection will pose a safety risk for our children, alter..." The proposed connection will pose a safety risk for our children, alter the feel and character of the neighborhood, create a material change in the usage of the road by increasing traffic and noise, and impact our property values negatively. The traffic study completed by Creighton Manning speaks to a significant traffic increase on Windsor Drive with the connection. The traffic increase will include those traveling to Blatnik Park, the high school, and the shopping plaza, in addition to work destinations during peak hours. The increase in traffic will range from twenty-five percent to twenty-nine percent, given Creighton Manning's findings. The connection will divert traffic that otherwise would use the GE Global Research Center traffic circle towards a residential neighborhood, ultimately ending in another intersection on an already busy River Road. As I'm sure you know, traffic circles are a better solution to contend with traffic volume safety and efficiently versus intersections in neighborhood roads. These new attached image evidencing Windsor east of Fox Hollow Road has never had a double yellow line or any road markings. We purchased believing Windsor would continue to not have a double yellow line, knowing the impact on property values. Based on opinion letters from well-established local appraisers, it is evident that professionals in the real estate industry believe that there would be a considerable decrease in property values. Letters from two appraisal firms are attached. The value decrease will also affect the tax revenue base for the town of Niskiuna. A decrease in value and therefore receivable taxes would negatively impact the revenue received by the town and school system. Master plan that has aged should be reevaluated and, sorry, reevaluated and reviewed to see if it still makes sense. A plan created before homes were built and residents established neighborhoods may no longer make sense. From a connectivity standpoint, a bike path can continue through the new development very easily, and a road is not necessary to create the connectivity. We would love to see the bike path continue through the development without the road. We understand and want other residents of Niskiuna to easily get to Blatnik Park. Based on the findings of the traffic study, as well as our, our own independent research, the time savings to use the connection road versus Vanantorp River Road is inconsequential. We have heard that potentially a fire safety and response time could be addressed with a road. Where would the fire truck be going that it makes sense to have this road? From a conservationist perspective, I would imagine the conservation advisory council would be in favor of a bike path and would not want to see a road added to this area. Given this additional access point to River Road, it is possible that large water ash to the wastewater treatment facility located on Whitmire Drive will now use this connection. In conclusion, we are strongly opposed to the connection of Windsor to River Road, and request that you deny this proposed road connection due to the number of issues that outweigh any potential benefit. Um, best regards, Danielle and Bernardo Biggali." Um, there is a picture that I emailed to you, and the town board is attached with the letter, and there was appraisal from Armstrong Appraisals, um, that emailed the town board. And it can be available for anybody who wants to see it. And appraisal from Old Kinderhook Appraisal Service, which was attached to several of the, um, um, public comment. If anybody has any comments or questions on them, I can pull them up for people to look at. The next, uh, email I have is from Arthur Pasquale, Pasquale Riallo. Members of the planning. "My name is Arthur Pas, oh, Es, Pasquale Rello, and my wife, Lydia, and I live at four zero one-six Windsor Drive. I would like to begin with a question to each member of the planning board. Assuming you lived on Windsor Drive, after you read the traffic study from Creighton Manning, would you have serious concerns about the future quality of the Windsor neighborhood and the value of your home? It seems abundantly clear that you would have to have those serious concerns, as we do. The study shows a significant traffic increase on Windsor, ranging from twenty-five to twenty-nine percent. Anticipated daily trips would increase by nine hundred and fifty vehicles, and increased vehicle use will change the classification of Windsor Drive from a local urban street to closer to an urban collector road, as vehicles from other nearby streets converge upon Windsor to travel around, about the town and elsewhere. The traffic tie-ups that we already experience in the morning when school is in session will worsen considerably, and all of this to save seventy seconds by using the Windsor Drive cut-through. In this study, the traffic engineer states on two occasions that the planning board must determine if the travel time benefits associated with the direct connection will outweigh any perceived impacts to quality of life as it relates to increased traffic through this predominantly residential area. Members of the planning board, walk a mile in our shoes as you answer this question. I wish to raise several other practical issues to be considered as a result of this study. Section two twenty dash twenty-eight of the Niskiuna Town Ordinance relating to matters to be addressed by the planning board regarding issuance of a special use permit states, "Such development shall not be detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of the persons residing in the vicinity or injurious to property or improvements within its proximity. It is submitted that the neighborhood, character of Windsor Drive, and the values of the homes located there will be harmed by this roadway connection. This is supported by numerous descriptions of increased traffic in the study, by the statements from two prominent appraisal firms that Windsor Drive Homes will experience a substantial decrease in property value from this connection, and by the many statements from residents who have presented their personal experiences with traffic safety, volume, and noise. This project with the connection simply cannot satisfy the legal requirements of section two, two zero dash twenty-eight H. The burden of proof cannot be met. Lastly, I wish to reference the town comprehensive plan of twenty thirteen. On page nine, under the category of transportation, the plan states, "However, no instance should transportation planning be concerned with transportation services alone." Further, it goes on to say, "As road traffic and speeds increase, the roads become a barrier. Safety becomes a problem, and the central neighborhood is lost. Members of the planning board, this will describe Windsor Drive if the connection is made." Thank you for your consideration. Get here. Okay. This, uh, next email is from Miss Trigger. Um, "The recent traffic study performed to ga, to gauge the impact of extending Windsor Drive into the proposed development of the Kelts Farm has confirmed the concerns current residents have about the impact it would have on our neighborhood. Traffic volume would significantly increase, and the character of the neighborhood would be changed for the worse. However, these changes would probably be even more detrimental than the traffic study states. The hourly traffic count and attachment B of the report is over five years old. Much concern has been expressed by residents about the speed of drivers on Windsor Drive. Planning board members have also expressed concern about this, even to the point of participating in a developer-led brainstorming session about converting Windsor Drive to a boulevard during a meeting, much to the concern of viewers of the broadcast, despite later assurances that there was no interest in doing so. Sorry. Unfortunately, while speeds on River Road are covered in the report, no analysis of speeds on Windsor Drive was included. Seems like a significant oversight." Sorry. "I understand that the term preferred by the planning board for the extension of Windsor Drive is connection rather than cut-through. But in reality, this would be used as a cut-through by drivers heading to points west. Travel time savings described by the report are not worth the disruption. A board member stated that he not want the new development to be isolated from the rest of the community. If approving a plan that benefits a developer requires a connection that negatively impacts current residents, perhaps an approval is not appropriate. And if the development is approved, those new residents and their families will also be negatively impacted by living on a cut-through as opposed to a more self-contained setting, similar to Rembrandt Drive just to the north. Emails from and comments at previous meetings by myself and others have been, have covered topics, including how such an extension does not comply with the comprehensive plan, the impact on stressed school buildings by adding homes, the precedent set for the next development on River Road, mitigation to slow existing traffic rather than adding more traffic, lowered property values, et cetera, et cetera." So I won't rehash them again here. I just ask that when making your decision, you place the real impact. Sorry. "I just ask that when making your decisions, you place the real impact of the proposed plan on current residents over the business aspirations of a developer." Connie Trigger, fours, four zero seven-two Windsor Drive. Um, this email's from Bill and Linda Ward. "We are writing in hopes that the Niskiuna Planning Board will reconsider extending Windsor Drive and making it a cut-through to River Road. Having now reviewed the results of the recent traffic study, we think even more that extending Windsor Drive is a poor decision for the following reasons. One, the cut-through will reduce travel time by only one minute and ten seconds compared to travel time using the traffic circle to the north, and will create significant problems resulting from traffic increase on Windsor Drive. It is, two, it is anticipated that with the extension, there will be an increase of nine hundred and fifty trips on Windsor Drive per day. There will be a twenty-five to twenty-nine percent increase in volume during both morning and afternoon peak hours. Three, the increased traffic will also affect the intersection of Windsor Drive and Vanantorp Road. Four, the category of Windsor Drive as a road will change from a local urban street to being closer to an urban collector road because of the increase in traffic. We trust that the planning board will take into consideration residents' concerns about traffic volume, safety, noise, and reduced property values if the Windsor Drive extension is approved. Bill and Linda Ward, four zero two-eight Windsor Drive." The next email is from Scott Soul. "Good evening. My name is Dr. Scott Soul. My wife, Dr. Amy Soul, and I built our house and moved into four zero eight zero Windsor Drive over nine years ago, when the new neighborhood was initially being developed. At the time, we were concerned about possible future development and a cut-through to Windsor Drive in the Kelts Farm area. We were told by our builder, Hotarowski Homes, that the supervisor of the town of Niskiuna, that the Army Corps, oh, and the supervisor of the town of Niskiuna, that the Army Corps of Engineers determined that Kelts Farms could never be developed, and we would always have a traffic buffer due to the natural wetlands that existed. After reviewing the traffic study, it is clear that traffic congestion and speed will substantially increase in our residential neighborhood on Windsor Drive and the surrounding streets. This is a major safety concern for those of us that have families with children that play and bike and drive around their residences and the neighborhood. Also, we are quite concerned with the future decrease in our property values, as you should be. Most of the assessments, including our own, our own, are rather high. We are happy to equitably pay our fair share to enjoy the benefits of living on Windsor Drive. But by allowing the build-out of Kelts Farm into townhomes and smaller dwellings, and the subsequent extension to Windsor Drive, it will be decreasing our property values. We, the taxpayers and voters of this community, will not stand for it. We will not tolerate paying those exorbitant, exorbitant taxes without substantial decreases of our assessments. Please know that we do not need to overburden our school system that is bursting at the seams as it is. We do not need another high-density housing development established to further tax our schools. We strongly oppose both the Kelts Farm development and the subsequent extension to Windsor Drive. Respectfully, Dr. Scott and Amy Soul." Um, next email is from Catherine Davis. "We are opposed to the Windsor Drive connection to River Road. We have reviewed the traffic study, which clearly shows that traffic on Windsor Drive will increase in volume and could change the classification of the road from a local urban street to an urban collector. This will greatly impact the character of our neighborhood. Increased traffic associated with the connection would only exactly with the existing issues with speeding, thereby making Windsor Drive less safe. This would make Windsor Drive a less desirable place to live and would impact property values. A property assessment was conducted by Old Kinderhook Appraisal Service. They provided a comparison study demonstrating that resale values for homes on busier roads in Niskiuna are reduced, and their appraisal predicts that property values on Windsor could decrease by ten percent or more if the connection, connector goes through. If this is in fact the case, town taxes for the homes on Windsor Drive should be reduced accordingly. We recommend a simple, increasing safety and reducing traffic speed on Windsor Drive. Install stop signs at the intersection of Menlo, St. Anne, Fox Hollow, and Brittany Place. The close proximity of the stop signs at each intersection along Windsor Drive would ensure that traffic speed is reduced. This would be similar to the frequent and close-spaced stop signs on Rose Hill that keep traffic at a slower pace. Stop signs on Windsor Drive would make it easier, give more time for pedestrians and cyclists to cross the street, and would make the street much safer. In summary, we are opposed to the connector road. The one-minute shorter transit time provided by the connector is not a worthwhile reason for making Windsor Drive a less safe and less desirable place to live. Sincerely, Berkeley and Catherine Davis, four zero two zero Windsor Drive." Next email is from Guiju Song. "My name is Guiju Song, residing at two two eight Brittany Place by the corner of Windsor Drive, for seven years with my son. As a single mom, I love the neighborhood and the town of Niskiuna because it is safe, quiet, and full of friendly neighbors. I've seen the traffic study from Creighton Manning, and the conclusion is the traffic on Windsor Drive will increase significantly if the connection is approved. The traffic volume, safety concerns, and noise, and the reduction of home values significantly impact every resident on Windsor. According to the data we gathered, potentially the houses on Windsor neighborhood will have a loss of ten to thirty percent if Windsor Drive becomes a heavily trafficked roadway. This is a major loss. With the COVID-nineteen, some of the neighbors may lose their full or partial incomes already, and we will face even bigger financial uncertainties with years to come. The loss of property value will significantly worsen the situation. I am against the connecting, connector, and respectfully request that the town planner, town board, and supervisor deny a connection from Windsor Drive to River Road." Thank you. Guiju Song, two two eight Brittany Place. Next email is from Dimple Glossy. "I am continuing to express my concern and strong opposition to Windsor Drive extension for reasons previously stated in my emails and summarized below. I have reviewed the traffic study requested by town, and it has confirmed our fears about increased traffic. Highlighted, the extension will cause increase in volume of traffic and through-traffic that impacts safety of our children and quality of life, increased noise and air pollution. Now, my review of the traffic study conducted shows increase in the volume of the through-traffic. Page nine, there would be a twenty-five to twenty-nine percent increase in volume during the morning, seven to eight peak hour, and the afternoon, five to six peak hour. This is pretty significant considering the current volume that we are already facing. Page ten, Windsor Drive currently serves approximately three thousand seven hundred and thirty-five daily trips. Is anticipated that the total daily trips may increase to four thousand six hundred and eighty-five trips with the proposed connection. That is an increase of nine hundred and fifty trips per day. The category of Windsor Drive as a road will change from a local urban street to be even closer to an urban collector road, page ten. That means drivers from other nearby streets will converge upon Windsor to travel to River Road, town center, and other destinations. Highlighted lowering of our property values. Home appraisals from Old Kinderhook Appraisal Service show a loss of value of ten to thirty percent if Windsor Drive becomes a heavily trafficked roadway. This is a major loss for us. Highlighted, change in the character of our neighborhood. The extension will change the character of our neighborhood that we cherish and love. Our homes and our dreams, our kids' dreams, our nests, our sanctuary, our anchor of existence, our ecosystem, and we want to preserve it. The comprehensive plan that is being run many times per review simply represents a snapshot of the town at a particular time and should not be viewed as static, but rather as dynamic policy instrument to be modified as needed to reflect changing conditions. According to comprehensive plan page five, paragraph two, "The comprehensive plan strives to preserve and build on these livability factors that give Niskiuna its identity. Preservation of community character not only has wide support from residents, its preservation makes economic sense, as quality of life is one of the things that most employers are looking for when relocating a business operation." Page five, paragraph four, "New development should not compromise the integrity of the surrounding neighborhoods. It is my sincere hope the town will consider these sentiments and vote against the connection. As stated previously, this issue is keeping all of us on the edge while struggling with our stressful lives in the current pandemic. Wishing you and all the planning board members a Happy Mother's Day. Thank you. Dimple Glossy." Four zero seven six Windsor Drive. Next, uh, comment is from Paon Munchi. "I am thoroughly, I thoroughly read traffic study from Creighton Manning to propose construction of Kelts Farm. From the onset, I would say that if any layman was to evaluate the finds of the report, it would arrive at same concerns that residents of Windsor Drive had from get-go. In my opinion, there was no need to hire an engineering company at the expense of Niskiuna taxpayer dollars. It was obvious that the cut-through to River Road would increase the traffic through Windsor Drive manyfold, hence compromising the safety noise levels and home values in the neighborhood. Is cut-through worth even considering and discussing? As reports indicate, there is a one-minute improvement of travel time. Just for the sake of reducing the travel time by one minute, we, the residents of Windsor Drive, are being subjected to noise, heavy traffic, safety of children, and substantial loss of property value. As referenced in the appraisal report attached, the value of the houses on Windsor Drive are going to lose ten to thirty percent, which is substantial. Please note below highlighted excerpts from the report that are very concerning in terms of traffic volume increase. Also note, the report mentions unthrough traffic coming from Rivers Casino, Erie Boulevard. A further addition of ten percent traffic coming from Rivers Casino would be a fair assessment. Also note, the report mentions that current Windsor Drive is classified as an urban local road. With cut-through, it takes the characteristics of Collector Road, meaning that it collects and channels all traffic on the adjoining areas to feed to River Road. This will result in change of character of the community. Change of characteristics goes against the spirit of the guiding document that is comprehensive plan. Residents of Windsor Drive have paid premium price to secure lots when portion of development was constructed- Residents of Windsor Drive have paid premium price to secure lots when portion of development was constructed in 2013. A similar model of traditional builder at their Niskiuna Flower Hill development was priced fifteen percent lower than Windsor Drive. As Windsor Drive commands premium pricing, the proposed cut through will severely compromise the house values, lowering the livability factor and quality of life. Please note page four of Comprehensive Plan. This statistic suggests there are other equally important factors that make Niskiuna an attractive place to live. This supposition is supported by a recent survey conducted by the Comprehensive Plan Committee, which revealed several town characteristics or livability factors that convince people to pay a premium to live in the town. Niskiuna has among the highest property values in Capital District. There would be a twenty-five to twenty-nine percent increase in volume during the morning, peak hour, and afternoon peak hour. That is substantial when you consider that these cars will be added to the current traffic level that we experience in Windsor. On page ten, it states Windsor Drive currently serves approximately three thousand seven hundred and thirty-five daily trips. It is anticipated that total daily trips may increase to four thousand six hundred and eighty-five trips with the proposed connection and has an increase of nine hundred and fifty trips per day. The increased traffic will also affect the intersection of Windsor Drive and Manantwerp Road. The category of Windsor Drive as a road will change from a local urban street to be being closer to an urban collector road. That means drivers from other nearby neighborhoods will converge upon Windsor to travel to River Road, Town Center, and other destinations. Much more traffic. For all the reasons above mentioned, I urge town to shelve the idea of a cut through to River Road and save valuable time of all the parties involved. Thanks. Paon Munchi. Zero seven six Windsor Drive. Next email is from Gretchen Platt. Thank you for your continued commitment to our community and exploring the many choices to be made for the future of our town. We applaud your immediate response to an overwhelming concern about speeding on Windsor Drive. The new flash and speed sign is a real improvement to the neighborhood, and we appreciate your swift action. As wonderful as the sign installment is, it is also very scary and concerning. This shows that you truly have the power to choose to extend Windsor Drive to River Road and make it a reality. We are reaching out to you to show our opposition to the extension as it will add considerable more trapit, sorry, considerably more traffic to our current safe and quiet neighborhood. The traffic study reflects a small, a very small decrease in travel time if using the proposed cut through. Does that really outweigh the safety and peace of our neighborhood? Thank you for considering our opposition as you continue to improve our town for the future. Kind regards, Gretchen and Alec Platt, two-two-zero Menlo Park. Next email from Rahul Chokkala. Hi, Rahul Chokkala, and my wife Florence are residents of four zero eight-nine Windsor Drive. We have gone through Creighton Manning Traffic Report in relation to the proposed connection of Windsor Drive with River Road. Please refer to our postscript below question, questioning data and criteria utilized for the study. The report tells us that we can expect traffic on our street to increase by twenty-five percent. That is nine hundred and fifty vehicles per day. It also makes it clear that the ongoing speeding vehicle issue on Windsor will only get exacerbated with the connection. The report estimated eighty-five percentile operating speeds on River Road to be about fifty-one miles per hour, which is eleven miles per hour above speed limit. Many of these vehicles using the cut through to Windsor will undoubtedly throttle back up and having slowed down going through the proposed Kelts Farm residential community. Report thereby completely validates our deep concerns about the connection, which unfortunately is part of the planning board's preferred subdivision plan. The report goes on to caution that the proposed shortcut could turn Windsor Drive into an urban collector and impact quality of life for the residents of this coveted community. Even more speeding vehicles than now would unquestionably increase risk to children's playing in our coveted neighborhood. Report understandably did not comment on potential loss of property values of Windsor and other affected neighborhoods, which by one estimate could be as high as thirty percent. If accurate, this would be devastating. We strongly feel that the onus is on the planning board in assessing impact on the property values of affected residential community as part of, as part of their overall evaluation. One may even wonder about potential impact on the salability and pricing of the proposed housing, supposedly aimed for retirees, considering that most of the vehicles on Windsor estimated to be four thousand six hundred and eighty-five a day and seven hundred and thirty-seven during a single peak hour will be noisily meandering through their community. All this leads to the main question. What exact are the benefits that outweigh sacrifices that Windsor community would need to bear? It possibly cannot be saving of about seventy seconds of the commute time for the transition, transiting vehicles. In our humble view, the care would be far worse than the problem. If the planning board regardless decides to proceed with the proposed connection, it must include in their reporting potential qualitative and quantitative impact on the community for sake of fairness. Thank you in advance, Roel and Florence Chokkala. Yes, we have concerns about Creighton Manning's traffic report, which hopefully will be clarified during the board's meeting or in your responses email. One, question one. Attachment B, traffic volume data, shows the date of the count to be uh, three thirty-one twenty fifteen, which is completely outdated considering, for instance, that Rivers Casino in Schenectady, one of the significant destinations for vehicles transiting River Road, opened only in twenty seventeen. Question two, figures three and four showing east-westbound traffic routes and table four summarizing the cut through traffic considers only one part of the River Road traffic, the part that transits through Vanantwerp two from GE Research Circle. It completely ignores traffic heading toward or returning from the casino in Schenectady city center via Providence Road and Ballton Road Knot Road Route, which are more direct routes as per Google Map. Either of the above concerns, if true, would render this traffic assessment seriously incomplete. Next, comment is from Soma Day. As a concerned resident of Windsor Drive and immediate neighbor of Kelt Farm, we want to understand the following apart from the proposed extension. Prior to building our house in twenty fourteen, we made several visits, visits to the town office and inquired about surrounding area, stormwater management site, adjacent wetland, and about the dead end of the Windsor Drive. We were never told about the Windsor Drive extension plan connecting to River Road, River Road, or about the existence of the comprehensive plan. We were even told that the Army Corps of Engineers determined that the Kelts Farms could never be developed due to the natural wetlands that existed. So what reversed the decision and what is the current process of wetland mitigation? Secondly, is the change in zonal density related to the wetland mitigation process? Are you approving the high zonal density to make it financially attractive for the builder at the expense of environmental impact and taxpaying residents? How is it possible to build such a high-density neighborhood close to this existing neighborhood when it is going to impact Windsor Drive houses' residents negatively? Finally, Kelts Farm was a private land until recently. How a comprehensive plan that was made in nineteen ninety-six can include a public-used roadway through a private land? I vehemently oppose this development. Regards, Dr. Soma Day, four one zero one Windsor Drive. Um, next comment is from Palavie Data. My name is Palavie Data, and I am fourteen years old. I am a freshman at Niskiuna High School now, and my family moved to Windsor Drive when I was in fourth grade. I have played ball with my friends, walked to school on the streets, and baked all around the neighborhoods over the summers. On any given day, you can see runners and bikers, people walking, dogs, neighbors admiring each other's tulips, and little kids selling lemonade. I'm writing this email because all of that is being threatened by the possibility of the Windsor Drive extension. I've grown up in this neighborhood, and that is why it is hard for me to even imagine my quiet little street as a busy main road. Recently, my dinner table discussions have been overtaken with talk about zonal densities. I found my parents annotating documents and poring over comprehensive plans, and when we run into neighbors on walks, we'll discuss property values and traffic instead of asking about the weather or school. While I can't speak about most of these topics, I can say a few things. As with many decisions, this one has far-reaching impact on my generation, and it's often difficult to make our voices heard. For one, the serenity of our neighborhood will be drastically altered forever. Speeding has already been a problem, and opening the street will considerably worsen the problem. I've never had to worry about my safety on the street, whether it was walking, playing outside, or crossing the street. But with the influx of another thousand or so cars every day, I think it is safe to say this will no longer be the case. Another aspect of which I have not heard addressed yet is the impact it will have on wildlife. When we moved into our house, the last on Windsor Drive, a dense thicket of trees in our backyard obscured River Road. Since then, nearly all of those trees have been cut down, and River Road is clearly visible. Deer, birds, and bunnies are among the many wildlife that we see every day that will be stripped of their habitat should this development and extension continue. We celebrate Earth Day and discuss these bigger world problems of habitat loss, deforestation, and climate change. But taking the small step that we can as a community to address them starts literally in our backyards. As far as I understand, the town board's job is to serve residents and ensure that our town remains safe and peaceful community that it is. I hope you will empathize with our concerns and hear our opposition for the project. The Windsor Drive community remains committed and passionate to the cause and ready to follow through. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Palava Data. Uh, next email from Yaminie and Mukish Care. We, Yaminie and Mukish Care, with our two children are residents of four zero six eight Windsor Drive. Once again, we are writing to you to express our strong opposition to the proposed cut through access to River Road from Windsor Drive. We have been living here for almost eight years and have seen the constant increase in the traffic volume and speeds on Windsor Drive through these years. Your reply to our last email stated that you are looking at a traffic study to explore some of the impacts the residents are concerned with about both the current and future situations. The recent traffic study from Creighton Manning clearly indicates further significant increase in traffic volume if this cut through is allowed. It will change the character of Windsor Drive from a relatively safer, quiet, local suburban street to a lot busier urban collector and road drawing traffic from surrounding wider areas to travel to River Road. It is completely redundant connection, which is, which it is expected to reduce the travel time by only one minute and ten seconds when compared to the current River Road traffic configuration. While being redundant in utility, this change will definitely cause a significant negative impact to the quality of life on not only Windsor Drive, but in the surrounding neighborhoods as well. If you really want the new development to be included as part of the surrounding neighborhoods, have the developer revise the site plan to have vehicular access only from Windsor Drive and cut off from River Road as continuous bike path connecting to the bike trail on the other side of River Road will maintain the safe outdoor character of this neighborhood and benefit all. Once again, we strongly urge you to consider the safety and quality of the existing neighborhoods as first priority while planning any future development. Thank you. Sincerely, Yaminie and Mukish Care. Next email from Rajib Data. As residents of four one zero one Windsor Drive, we, Soma Day and Rajib Data, have earlier raised our vehement, vehement, sorry, objection to the proposed extension. The traffic report provides a substantial basis supporting our concern, even though we strongly believe that the impact of this project will be much more serious than what is presented in the study. Table one, table four shows that today the traffic from east or west side gets divided by forty percent through local roads and Windsor Drive and sixty percent through River Road and Vanantwerp. This is assumed to change to ninety percent via Windsor Drive and ten percent going through the GE Traffic Circle. So the project primarily diverts traffic from GE Circle to a neighborhood road, apparently saving one minute, ten seconds of travel time. Just highlighting the rush hour traffic and convinced subdues the impact of the project and its absurdity of the overall proposal. Please note that this traffic is mostly local residents accessing town offices, schools, grocery stores, banks, et cetera. Two, what the study does not capture in the high volume of traffic that goes between River Road and Providence Road via GE Circle towards Schenectady downtown area. With the extension, this traffic volume will cut through Windsor and Knot Street towards Erie Boulevard. The casino traffic coming from the east side on River Road will clearly follow the route along with the rush hour traffic to and from GE Downtown Campus or Schenectady Downtown Businesses. This is important and glaring omission in the study that will increase the traffic on Windsor manyfold. Also, during morning school hour, the traffic at the Knot Street-Vanantwerp intersection is already pretty heavy. It takes us regularly fifteen to twenty minutes to drive to school to drop off our daughter at seven-thirty, a distance of about one mile. With majority of the traffic diverted through Windsor, this problem will be extremely severe. Four, the study states that Windsor Drive will change from an urban local road to an urban collector road. It concludes by questioning the travel time benefit against the perceived impact on the quality of life in the community due to increased traffic. An assessment of real estate valuation shows property prices dropping up to thirty percent. This is bound to have a major financial impact on the residents. Much of what we have learned here is quite obvious. It just tries to quantify the situation, however, portrays a narrow view of the problem. We question the motivati- we question the motivation of the board to promote this project and unwisely waste taxpayer dollars under the guise of a comprehensive plan. This project needs to be dropped immediately without further wastage of our time and money, and please do not come up with more fanciful ideas such as boulevards. Your concern of overspeeding can be easily mitigated with a few stop signs on Windsor Drive. Regards, Soma Day. Rajib Data, thanks for your reply. We just wanted to reiterate that issuing, the issue of speeding should be kept separate from the extension topic. We are a community, sorry, we as a community are absolutely against the extension as we have already voiced strongly several times and in many possible ways. What is frustrating is the total disregard to that primary concern. As concerned citizens and residents of this town and this wonderful neighborhood, we are determined to oppose this destructive project. We have lived earlier on Rembrandt Drive for many years, only connected to River Road. There are several communities in Niskiuna, and for that matter, in any town, where neighborhoods are built on dead-end streets, the new development can be built as a cul-de-sac connected to Windsor within, without an outlet to River Road. It is irrational for the town planning board to make an outdated comprehensive plan um, the basis of pushing the extension. We wish and earnestly hope that the project is not pushed and only the bike path connection to Blatnik Park is built. Um, next comment is from Hume Farzana Sayad. Plans for River Road extension will change the traffic in the neighborhood as shown by this traffic study. After going through the traffic study, it is further clear that the River Road extension will disrupt the environment of the neighborhood of Windsor Drive and surrounding streets. As this traffic study has shown that a cut through to River Road is going to reduce travel time by about a minute and ten seconds only, but will increase the traffic of on, on our street by twenty-five to twenty-nine percent in morning peak hour and in afternoon peak hour. This will use, this will reduce property values by thirty percent. Windsor Drive being a residential neighborhood with houses having high assessments, meaning that we are paying high taxes for our properties, the increase in traffic will affect our safety on the roadways in our neighborhood in addition to decreasing the value of property. Zane and Farzana Sayad, four zero four zero Windsor Drive. Next email from Payolina Nesevic. This is to address the town's plan to convert Windsor Drive to cut through road to River Road. As already voiced before, my family that lives on Windsor Drive strongly opposes this plan. We are very concerned about the traffic increase potential for more accidents, reduced safety on the road area that many children who attend high school, middle school use. The traffic increase, which was estimated to be with this plan in the level of twenty-five to thirty-five percent, will inevitably cause significant loss of all properties on Windsor Drive. The new development cannot be used as an excuse for the cut through using Windsor Drive. Many similar developments on River Road, Parkville Place, do not connect to any road connector other than River Road. Thank you for your consideration. Best regards, Payolina Nesevic, Windsor Drive, four zero five six. Next email is from John Maynard. Good evening, Laura. I am reaching out to you in regards to the discussion on the Windsor Drive cut-through discussion that will be taking place. As you know, I am opposed to this cut through from Windsor Drive to Reserve, to River Road through many through many points I discussed in my face-to-face interaction with the town planning board and my email to you last month. I have recently read the traffic study from Creighton Manning, and my heart sank from learning how much increased traffic would go down this residential neighborhood. Yeah, my heart sank from learning how much increased traffic would go down this residential neighborhood if such a cut through was established. In the report, it states an increased volume of nine hundred and fifty-plus cars per day would be going down the roadway, changing it from a residential neighborhood to a major cut through for everyone. The report looks like it gathered information up to twenty fifteen, which I believe doesn't have the data that would show more volume coming from the Rivers Casino. I do not see the need to increase traffic on a road that wasn't designed to handle such traffic. The current roadway has speeding that happens daily, even when we are in lockdown pandemic. I am in front of the new speed sign on Windsor, and people are speeding daily. Some are speeding to see how fast they are going, which I bet you wouldn't believe it, but it is happening. The other way from Fox Hollow, people are traveling fast down towards Manantwerp. I also stress that all GPS programs, once they learn the cut through in the data, it will have everyone's single car heading this way due to the least resistance. Think of water flowing down a channel. The water will flow with the least resistance. We have roadways already established that help us travel to point, to point with ease. Why such a discussion to make a cut through is truly sad in many ways. A point I made during the face-to-face meeting in March, I discussed the home values in the neighborhood and how they would lower the value due to the increased traffic down the street. In the recent appraisal that my fellow neighbors have sent you already and provided data and found it would lower home values by ten to thirty percent, which is a truly scary thought. Lower values equals lower tax revenue. Why would we want to destroy a staple neighborhood in the community? Why would we want to turn a neighborhood into a cut through to gain what? Thirty to sixty to ninety seconds? I feel this would pull this neighborhood apart into individual sides- Thirty to sixty to ninety seconds? I feel this would pull this neighborhood apart into individual silos on an extremely busy road. Why would you want to do that? Please consider our input. My family, my neighbors and my community can't stress enough on how we do not agree with this cut through. Thank you for reading this letter during your planning board discussion to the board. Regards, John Maynard, 4049 Windsor Drive. Next email is from Susan Foot. As a resident of Menlo Park Road with the corner of our lot on Windsor Drive, I am writing to let you and the town planning board know of my dismay regarding the drive, the Windsor Drive cut through. After reading the traffic study that was done by Creighton Manning, I find it worrisome that an additional nine hundred plus vehicles could potentially use the Windsor Drive corridor to reach just such destinations as the library, high school, river's casino, et cetera. I was also shocked to learn that vehicles using the cut through would only save an additional one minute of time as opposed to using the existing route of the traffic circle at the R and D center to Van Antwerp Road. The neighborhood is very child-friendly, which concerns me when you add nine hundred plus cars into the equation. The safety issue doesn't end there. Windsor is not only used by children on bicycles and or school buses, but is also used by the high school track team as a running route, used by adults as a bike route, and used by elders as a walking route. Why the town would endanger so many of its residents is mind-boggling. Also, I understand that our property values could drop anywhere from ten to thirty percent and all for the sake of a few single-family homes and additional townhomes. I ask that the town planning board members and supervisor Sayad, give this matter serious attention. I remain hopeful that the cut through is rejected. Thank you for your time and attention, Susan Foot. Oops, getting there. Next email is from Sonia Shetty. We would like to once again express our strong opposition to the proposed Windsor Drive cut through to River Road and request that you kindly drop this plan. We have reviewed the traffic study report by Creighton Manning on this project. The report further substantiates our initial concerns about this project. One, as the report shows, the traffic volume will substantially increase by twenty-five to thirty-five, thirty percent. And as it connects to River Road, we expect to see a further increase in general traffic speed as well, making the neighborhood unsafe and increasing the noise level substantially on the generally quiet residential neighborhood. The report concludes that the Windsor Drive classification will change from an urban local road to an urban collector road, changing the character of the neighborhood and further increasing local traffic. Concerns covered in bullet one and two will also cause a substantial drop in our property values. As the report also shows, this cut through to River Road will have a very minimal benefit on of about a minute saving in travel time when compared to using the traffic circle to the north to access the local roads. The report questions whether such a minimal benefit is worth subjecting the residence of Windsor Drive to all the problems associated with increased traffic. With their final conclusion, the town of Niskuna Planning Board will need to determine if travel time benefits associated with the direct connection will outweigh any impacts to quality of life associated with increased traffic and changed character of the neighborhood. We, as fifteen-year residents of Windsor Drive, are strongly opposed to this plan and kindly request that you take our opinion seriously and reject the plan. Thank you, Sonia and Raj Shetty, 4044 Windsor Drive. Our next email from Anne H. Mirza. I know that you have received many emails in the past few days from my neighbors regarding the traffic study. I agree with all the comments that have been submitted to you. The increase of almost a thousand cars per day is hard to process considering the problems we already have at high school time on Windsor Drive and Knott Street East. It seems unbelievable to think that adding additional traffic to a road that is already struggling with speeding and traffic issues is in the best interest of Niskuna residents. Stay healthy. Sincerely, Helena Mirza, 22 Briar Ridge. Corner Briar Ridge and Windsor Drive. Next email is from Susan Kaymara. Niskuna's comprehensive town plan, which was adopted in 2013, clearly took extending Windsor Drive off the town's developer, development map. The plan also states that new development should not compromise the integrity of surrounding neighborhoods. We strongly feel that the town board, the town planning board and the town board should honor the plan that was adopted just seven years ago. We also believe the traffic study that the town planning board is apparently looking at is too outdated to be much value as it pre- as it predates both significant downtown Schenectady development and the addition of a number of houses to Windsor Drive. One point the study does make is that a through road would cut just over a minute from across town trip. This does not seem significant enough to be worth the cost to the community. We have lived in Niskuna for over fifty years and have appreciated, have appreciated its gradual development, particularly in its parks and walkable neighborhoods. Keep the traffic slow and we'll take the extra minute of our drives to enjoy our town. Sincerely, Jean and Susan Kaymara. The next email is from Jennifer Lean. We are vehemently against the connector and extension of Windsor Drive. The traffic study shows a tremendous increase in traffic on Windsor Drive. Windsor Drive is already busy, especially with speeding cars. I am extremely nervous about this due to safety for my children and for the value of my home. All of this to save, what, sixty seconds in a commute? We are on Brittany Place, one house in from Windsor Drive. We bought on this street specifically because it was quiet and not a cut-through street. This is incredibly disappointing if this passes and gets made into a cut-through street. We need to protect the residents that are currently here and paying tax dollars and trying to utilize the resources Niskuna has to offer. I want my six and nine-year-old to be able to be kids. I want them to be able to bike and scooter and skateboard and not have to worry that they will be killed when they go outside. I am extremely worried about adding additional housing to a school that is already full. You are rezoning schools because schools are at occupancy. How can we then be adding additional housing units? Thank you, Jennifer Lean, 221 Brittany Place. Next email from Yang Sui. My name is Yang Sui and I live at 4045 Windsor Drive with my wife and two daughters. Our Windsor Drive property, our Windsor Drive neighbors have collectively conducted research on this changing, our Windsor Drive neighbors have collectively conducted research on the changes in traffic patterns and the changes our property values if a cut through were to be made to the new development between the end of Windsor Drive and River Road. See attachment. And he attached two appraisals that we had talked about before and the traffic study that was in your packet. Here are the adverse effects for Windsor Drive residents. There will be a twenty-five to twenty-nine percent increase in traffic volume during morning and afternoon peak hours. Currently, the traffic already gets backed up to St. Anne Drive from the Windsor Drive and Van Antwerp road intersection during morning hours. The daily traffic will ra- rise by nine hundred and fifty trips, which is a twenty-five percent increase. There will be more commercial truck traffic, a safety concern for families and children. The noise level will increase dramatically and reduce property values. The traffic speed on Windsor Drive will increase a safety concern. It's already at thirty-five to forty miles per hour, shown by the radar speed sign in front of my house. The property value on Windsor Drive is likely to be reduced ten to thirty-four percent. The benefits of connecting Windsor Drive to the new development, our travel time from River Road to Van Antwerp or Town Hall is reduced by one minute and 10 seconds. We bought our home on Windsor Drive in 2011 and I've absolutely loved to live here. It is nice and quiet neighborhood with lots of families and kids. As you can see from the above, the folks on Windsor Drive will make a significant sacrifice in home value and quality of life if a cut through were to be made. The benefit is very minimal. In my opinion, the harm significantly outweighs the benefits. We believe the town and Niskuna officials are elected to represent the interests of the people living here. Please listen to the outcry of the people as you are about to make a decision that will impact their lives. Your sensible decision will be appreciated. Thank, best regards, Yang Sui.
Laura, thank you so much for reading all those. We really appreciate it. And thank you to the public for all your comments. Um, just want to let everybody know that Laura did cut and paste them all into one PDF document. And we received those earlier this evening, uh, so we can review those independently also. Laura, do you know if we have anybody else that would like to speak under privilege of the floor out there? Did anybody signed in or showed up? For privilege of the floor? Was it sounded, huh? If, remember if, if you are out there, make sure you take off, you're off mute, um, if you want to be heard, okay?
I did get a couple of follow-up emails. Um, I do think that potentially we'll have, be able to have more people participate. I wasn't able to respond to some of the emails until pretty late and they did email me. Um, I'll try and follow up with some of the comments while you guys are continuing on with the meeting, but I do think that that concludes everything that we have so far for privilege of the floor.
Okay, we can always jump back, Laura, under, uh, uh, you know, I guess I'd like to get it before the discussion item if we could, but I'll go forward with the, the meeting. That's okay with everybody. All right. So next, uh, we have unfinished business, which we don't have any unfinished business, so we'll move right to new business. Um, uh, one item under new business tonight, and that item is resolution 2020 dash fourteen, resolution to make a secret determination and call for a public hearing on a four, four lot minor subdivision application by Lou Leacy at 5250 Vincenzo Drive. And I, uh, the resolution was posted and available to the public and to all board members posted Friday night. But I'd like to at least read the key components of the resolution, uh, make sure there are some minor changes, but very minor.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
This, uh, this is Mo Oster. Just to remind you again that I need to recuse myself in this discussion.
Yes, Mo, and thank you very much. I always want to say that, but I always regret, thank you, Mo. So Mr. Oster will recuse himself and his gold, uh, will be sitting in, uh, for any Vincenzo related, uh, uh, determinations or, uh, decisions. Okay, so resolve that the planning board and zoning commission hereby determine that this project will not have a significant effect on the environment and hereby directs the town planner to file a negative secret declaration subject to strict adherence to the following conditions. Number one, lot one, lot two and lot three shall contain a deed restriction that prohibits future subdivision of each lot in perpetuity. Two, lot four shall contain a deed restriction on the rear portion of the lot adjacent to the lands now or formerly of Paulson Alley. Proposed lot one and two and proposed lot three, as shown in the above referenced preliminary plat, that prohibits future subdivision of that portion of parcel in perpetuity. Three, the plat note for this subdivision shall contain a statement that any future proposals to subdivide lot four shall automatically warrant major subdivision review, regardless of whether the proposal would otherwise fall within the realm of minor subdivision review. I.e., a proposal to subdivide lot four into two parcels automatically trigger, triggers a major subdivision review. Number four, identified drainage considerations shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the planning board and town engineering department. Number five, a small portion of the frontage of lot one shall be conveyed to the town so as to bring lot one into conformance with the zoning code section two twenty dash fifteen C. Six, natural trees on lots one through four shall be left as a buffer to the extent practicable to the residential homes directly abutting the property lines of lots one through four. Number seven, the applicant shall implement the recommendations of the tree council with regards to subdivision street planting along Vincenzo Drive, St. Girard Drive, Antonio Drive and Row Road as applicable. Further resolve that this planning board does hereby call for a public hearing to be held on Monday, June eighth, 2020 at seven PM via video conference to consider the application of Lou Leacy for four lot minor subdivision at 2520 Vincenzo Drive. Uh, Mr. Diarpino, do I have a motion on the resolution?
I so moved to adopt the resolution.
All right, move for adoption by David Diarpino. Do I have a second? Okay, uh, I second that. Sounds like that was Ms. Gold. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, second by Ms. Gold. And, um, I know we have the applicant, uh, online, Mr. Leacy and his engineer, Mr. Steenberger, both online. Uh, um, I know that the conditions were just very slightly modified from what was seen earlier. Laura, did they get an updated copy of the resolution?
Uh, no, I apologize. I didn't send it to them. Oh, I can actually email it now if you guys are interested.
And I, I think it was just a little bit of word engineering, um, uh, but I think the, uh, to me, it doesn't seem like it's, you know, change, just, uh, it's cleaned up a bit.
Yeah, the condition was something I wanted them to be clear. Yeah. Oh, hi Alexis.
Oh, hi. Sorry, I had my camera off, um, for obvious reasons, so Taylor. Um, hi, everyone. Yeah, no, I just cleaned it up and I just, um, separated originally the first condition regarding the deed restrictions was one clause. Oh, that's why I was on that. Taylor supply. So I just separated those into two. I also thought that, you know, but we, but we understand the reasoning underlying the conditions. So just to clean it up, I removed that verbiage. But, you know, no- nothing new, nothing, you know, adding more of a burden to the applicant or lessening the planning boards um, and the secret determinations made, conditions report there. And if anyone has any questions, feel free to chime in. I'll go back on mute.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Kim. Uh, Mr. Steenberger, uh, Mr. Leacy, um, any comments or questions regarding the, um, the conditions of the resolution?
I, I didn't, I didn't hear anything. Lou, did you hear anything?
No, I'm good with it.
I, I thought I was good with it as well.
Okay. One other thing while I have, while I have you guys, um, we did hear some comments during the privilege of the floor. It sounds like, oh, it looks like we had three residents speak. Uh, uh, obviously, um, questioning the, um, um, report of Mr. Steenberg. Uh, we know that Weston and Sampson has, uh, provided comments on that report. Could you tell us for the public's information what the, uh, uh, you have not responded to the Weston and Sampson, uh, comments. Is that correct, Mr. Steenberg?
That's, that's correct. Um, we actually, uh, actually, when I received the comments, uh, two weeks ago, we had asked the TDE a question regarding, um, the requirements for a full stormwater pollution prevention plan with post-construction, water quality and water quantity. Um, I'm confident that it is not required and if, uh, if you can go to, I can show it here if you want, but table one of the, the SWIP document of the SWIP, um, permit excludes projects of this magnitude, um, for requiring water quantity and water quality. However, the, um, the applicant has agreed to provide some stormwater quantity controls for lot two because of the issues on Vincenzo. And that's, that's really what the crux of, um, the, the review, uh, is around is regarding that bio-retention basin. And we'll work with the TDE on that. Um, I did, um, I did attempt to get confirmation from the Schenectady County Regional Permit Administrator regarding this, Jamie Malcolm. Um, his initial, uh, response was no, it doesn't, uh, meet the standards. I did send him a copy of this table with, uh, certain sections highlighted. And then he never responded back. So I went to the state, uh, permit administrator, Dave Gasper, who, um, heads up the, uh, basically writes the permit and is the one who is in charge that everybody goes to when they have questions, uh, and and oversees all of the regional administrators. And he confirmed, um, he confirmed by interpretation of the permit that a water quantity, um, and quality, uh, study isn't required for the, for this project because of its magnitude, um, and offered to, um, get the, um, get Jamie on the phone in a conference call. At the time, I kind of wanted to just wait to see if I could hear back from Jamie, um, which I haven't, but I am aware that the town has a, has a conference call with Jamie tomorrow to clarify this issue. And I, I think at the end of the day, I think, um, you know, there've been many things that have been pointed out why it wouldn't be, but I've again, gone back to the D E C, the, the, the head person to determine, um, if, if the, any of those would trigger it and and, um, certainly, uh, and, and he has responded that, that our, um, my, uh, my interpretation of the permit is correct. We've been working with this permit for about twenty years now. Um, can't see my, my, uh, my camera, but right behind my camera is a whole flow chart on what triggers certain things, uh, for this permit because it's something that we do almost every day, um, with this. So it's, it's something that I'm very familiar with and I'm confident that, um, we will not require the water quantity and quality study for the entire site. However, Mr. Leacy, because of the issues on Vincenzo and downstream of that, it offers to review the water qua- quantity. Um, going into some of the comments I heard tonight saying that it, it was only sized for the two-year storm. That's not correct. It was sized to contain the two-year storm and it was sized on the ten-year storm and the hundred-year storm had very slight amount of runoff. And when I say slight amount of runoff, we're talking, um, eighty-five to ninety-five percent where reduc- eighty-five percent reduction for the one-hundred-year storm for water, um, for the, uh, um, for the peak rate of runoff and ninety-some odd percent for the ten-year storm for the peak rate of runoff. And then evaluating that even further, which is not required in your code, nor is it required in D E C's code, even if that were to trigger. Um, I, I wanted to take a look at it from a water volume standpoint because everybody, everybody talks about peak rates of runoff, but doesn't talk about water volumes. And if water gets bonded up downstream, that becomes an issue. Um, and we are showing, um, a forty-five percent reduction for the one-hundred-year storm in water volume, um, post-construction and a, uh, and a eighty-four percent reduction for the ten-year storm in volume runoff from the site. So I feel confident that what we've got proposed in the area that we've got proposed for that bio-retention basin will indeed, um, indeed provide the, the attenuation necessary that there aren't any downstream impacts on Vincenzo and we'll work through this with Weston Sampson and, um, um, and the TDE on that and the town engineering department. Um, but that's, that's, that's essentially where we are and that's the reason we don't have written responses because a third of their comments go away, um, once we get this straightened out.
Okay, thank you. Um, just like they opened it up to the board and, uh, especially Mr. Diarpino, any questions for the applicant or any discussion items?
Uh, no, I just wanted to, I wanted to let the, uh, board know and also, uh, the applicant that last Thursday, when there was that pretty significant that last Thursday, when there was that pretty significant rainstorm in the morning, I did go over to Vincenzo and take some pictures. I noticed that the Catch Basin on the right-hand side was taking on most of the water coming down Vincenzo Drive. Catch Basin on the left-hand side was not capturing all the water runoff coming down. There was some of it that was diverting to the right-hand side of it. I did send pictures over to Planning Department to, for distribution to the board so they could see it in, in actual real time during a storm. And it seemed as though that water was flowing down onto Rao Road. It was being diverted on the natural asphalt swale at the edge of the road down to the next Catch Basin. I didn't see a significant overflowing of anything down into neighboring yards, but the Catch Basin was not collecting everything at the edge of the road. Those are the only observations that I had that were new since the last meeting.
And you think that was because of the pitch of the road as it was paved? Dave, I did see the pictures. Maybe we can share those with Brett and Mr. Leacy if they haven't seen those, okay?
Yeah, I think. I would like to see those when you can.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I know, when I looked at the last photo that Laura pulled up, it looked like that Catch Basin. If you're looking up Vincenzo, the Catch Basin on the left-hand side looked like it might be a little bit high, and water might be bypassing it. My main concern is if we're getting a tremendous amount of water from the driveway on the left-hand side of Vincenzo up to where lot one connects, and based on all of my observations that I've seen during storm events, there is not a lot of water coming off of lot one. Most of that water is actually coming out of the rear yard of the house that's on the corner of Vincenzo and Row. There's a swell that kind of comes down just above their driveway and comes down the, down the street there. But that's something we can continue to look at.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board or the applicant?
I just, Jengus, I just have a, at least one procedural question. Does it make sense to resolve on a negative declaration on environmental quality without having a complete story on all and everything around water? Meaning, you know, Mr. Steenberg's response to the TD and also what their final assessments are based on their response?
So Jengus, that is your comfort level, but I did, when the CAC was reviewing it, and this is the same advice I give the CAC, I guess the question was, if you feel that the engineering is insurmountable at this point, or that you really think that those details are critical to the actual seeker itself, like those details, then you would want to wait, but there is a condition, it's a condition secret determination that states that the engineering has to be addressed to the satisfaction of the town engineer in code. So that gives you the leeway to know that, you know, you still have engineering issues that have to be worked out, but they wouldn't be insurmountable.
Right, and so, so I'm just going to comment on your words, insurmountable and critical. I, the word I use is just complete, which is a little more hopefully of a factual, check the box, are things complete? And so by things, I mean actually, again, the engineers' response to, the applicant's and engineers' response to the initial TD report and any other comments the TD would have based on that. Plus, the discussions that seem to still be ongoing around whether both water quality and quantity, you know, I know, you know, again, the, you know, the age of the permit and the experience with it, et cetera, but there is still a question that's under discussion concerning that, that I don't think there's a clear answer on. So I'm just looking from a perspective of, you know, are, are, are questions answered completely at this point?
Now, my personal opinion is that this is typical, you know, how we usually handle a public hearing and a secret determination. You know, it's a work in progress. I would hope that the applicant would respond to the Weston and Sampson comments prior to the public hearing, and we'll make those available to the public. And then we'll have, the public will have an opportunity along with ourselves to challenge those responses from the applicant, and we'll take that into consideration with the data provided at the public hearing. This by no means is a final approval. It keeps the process going is the way I look at it. As Laura stated, condition number four of the resolution states that it's a satisfaction of the Planning Board and Town Engineering Department, the drainage. So, you know, I consider that a work in progress that we'll continue to work on.
Yeah, and if I could just follow up on Mr. Khan's comment and the, you know, kind of add my concern regarding completeness, particularly in calling for a public hearing. The, the neighbors of this proposed element have raised some very specific concerns. They've obviously done their due diligence in reviewing the TDE comments from Weston and Sampson. So something as, as specific as that item 16, which one of the residents referred to, provide at a minimum of a four-inch perforated underdrain pipe within the crushed stone of the bioretention area. I would hope we can have that on a plan prior to calling, having a public hearing. But, but really, it would be nice to have that in hand before calling for the public hearing, just to have that assurance that we are looking at the latest and greatest version revision.
This is Jengus again, and I'm glad Patrick spoke up before me, because the, so I think I have, and in the spirit of being, you know, decisive and clear, I think there's actually nothing more that we would need to hear from the public to actually know their position on this. So given all the comments we've gotten privileged of the floor and previously from the public, as we've also heard today, right? I think as a planning board member, I am very confident that I know what the public perspective of this, you know, development is. And I don't see it necessary to rush to a public hearing on June 8th. I think that completeness relative to the critical issue that the public has raised, which is water. And I'll go further to say, you know, everything around water management, stormwater management, and I'll use the words quantity and quality, knowing fully all the pending discussion that's, that's going to be going on. I think that's where the public primary issues and interests lie, and I'm not comfortable declaring a negative declaration on this until there is some completeness to, to that application.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the board with comments regarding the resolution? We have a resolution on the floor with a motion to adopt in a second. Anyone else?
This is just Alexis, Kim. I just have one point of clarification. So Laura, can you speak to, is, when is there a public hearing required? Is there a timeliness requirement in the code with regards to one for one? I feel as if I'm on the board, but it's almost counterintuitive. I feel like on the other hand, why you feel as if we kind of really understand the public's input and, you know, the public's view on this, it would seem counterintuitive to say that we should then push off the public hearing. I thought that the opposite on the hand was going to say, you know, public hearing, you know, may be whatever we've heard so far, so why not move forward with it? Laura, so can you speak to that? Just to whether or not a public hearing, when it's required, if there's a timeliness requirement? I want to make sure that before, you know, if a motion is going to be made to either out of condition or to put it off, that we just are fully understand the requirements.
Um, for a subdivision in the state of New York, you need to do the secret, sorry, you need to do a secret determination to determine that the application is complete prior to calling for a public hearing, which is why typically the planning board does the secret determination in a resolution calling for the public hearing. You guys often verbally call for a public hearing on site plan, especially smaller site plans. But in this instance, because you have to do the secret determination, determine the application is complete prior to the public hearing. So it's almost the same answer that we, you know, that we gave to Joel, that you have to, I mean, the application has to be determined complete in order to do the secret determination. So it's, I really, I think the planning board's discretion, if they feel that there's outstanding data that has to be given to them in order to make the determination, or if they feel that they've got enough of, an understanding of what the environmental impacts are, it's complete, and then you're just working through the details.
And so to follow up on that, the reason, if you were to vote, that is, or, you know, be of the view that it's not complete, it was because of that number 16 in the report that Mr. Khan had mentioned, that not having been completed before tonight? Or is it the fear that it won't be ready for the public hearing?
No, so I think the outstanding issue is that it substantially changes the engineering if a full SWIP is required. So, and Mr. Khan was getting at this, I guess the question is, if a full SWIP was required and it was a very tiny lot, and you could put a bioretention basin in there, but if a full SWIP required, like a full retention, detention basin, and there wasn't enough room, like would it make the application unable to be actually like completed? In this instance, there's a lot of land there, so I think that if a full SWIP is needed, the applicant does have options in order to be able to comply. But again, it is an outstanding issue that would substantially potentially change some of the engineering.
This is Leslie. I think the application itself is complete. And truthfully, the engineering details are never final until they're final. And at this stage, in a public hearing, that's not the case. Because after all is said and done, another look-through by the town itself, not just the TDE, and there can be changes. So I think we're at an appropriate point to go for the public hearing.
Yeah, so let me just reiterate what I'm saying. My, my, I had made the comment earlier addressing both items in the resolution. My main concern actually is around the negative secret determination and the completeness of the application, especially around the water quality, especially around the, the, the water management aspects of it for making that determination, right? I'm, I'm okay with a public hearing whenever a public hearing is necessary to be had, but I feel that the public actually has already conveyed what their concerns are. So my, my, my main point was around the negative declaration on secret.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Khan. Anybody else have any comments or concerns regarding the resolution on the floor? Okay, any other comments or concerns? I can ask Mr. Henry, please call the roll.
Mr. LaFlem?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Nay.
Mr. McPartlin?
Nay.
Mr. Diarpino?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Aye. We missing somebody there, Clark?
Ms. Schenfield.
Aye.
Ms. Schenfield is nay?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so the resolution passes, one, two, three, five ayes to two nays. I'd just like to add for the, my comment to why I voted the way I did. I think this is in keeping the practices, historic practices. We're, we're at the point where there's some engineering questions, and I think that they can be addressed. So I think it's appropriate that we go forward with the public hearing at this point in time. As stated by the town planner a moment ago, you know, we need to work through the engineering details, and Mr. Steenberg and the applicant will respond to the Weston and Sampson letter. We expect to have that in prior to the public hearing with ample time to review it and for the planning board, engineering, and for the public to be able to review it. So that's an expectation, Mr. Steenberg, Mr. Leacy, please have that in. Also, because of the size of the lot, there is flexibility, as Laura stated, to be able to resolve the problems. This isn't an typical R1 or R2 subdivision. It's very low intensity based on the four lots, so there's a lot of room to be able to resolve any of the engineering issues that come up. So for those reasons, that's why I think it's appropriate to go forward and to issue a negative declaration. Does anybody else have any other comments?
Chairman Walsh, I just wanted to state, and I apologize for not stating this earlier, that we do think that there's still going to be restrictions on public gatherings by June 8th, and so we're calling for it as a teleconference public hearing. And we will put that in notifications and will help people to log in and afford anyone the opportunity to speak. It is very likely going to be a video conference public hearing.
Yep, I stated in the resolution. Yep, thank you, Laura.
And also, it's just, it's also a little unusual, because when we set the planning board meetings out, there's no further meetings in May. So there's actually a month between now and then, which will give the developer more time and timely, for timely comments and.
Oh, thank you, Laura. Forgot about that. Because it won't be till June, June 8th, so we got a few weeks there. Any other comments regarding this resolution under new business? Okay, we'll move on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Kevin, can I add one more thing? If Norm is still listening, I'm just a general speaking to address who, who does the operation and maintenance of bioretention areas.
Yeah, Laura, I'm still on.
Okay, yeah, so typically, when it's on private property, the property owner signs a contract with the town that they will maintain it, and the operation and maintenance manual is written into the, even if it's just a basic SWIP, it's written in there. And something gets recorded to the property that says that they have to maintain it, and they also record an easement to the town. If they don't maintain it according to the practices that are already outlined in the manual, the town can go in there and maintain it and charge the maintenance to their property. So that's typically what happens. On like subdivisions where a parcel contains an entire, contains an entire stormwater detention basin, then typically the town will take that parcel and it'll be a town-owned detention basin. And in that case, the town just follows the operation and maintenance that's, you know, that the manual is designed for, which is typically mowing a couple of times a year, and then every, you know, 15 to 20 years, like dredging. So in, in this case, it would probably be, it would probably be privately owned and maintained with an easement and designation to the town that if they don't maintain it according to the standards, that we go in there and maintain it and charge them.
How, yeah, Laura, how do you monitor that? I mean, it's on private property. I don't have a town can review, you know, are my gutters clogged up, you know, for example?
Yeah, we don't. Well, actually, it's technically against code if your gutter's clogged up. But that one's a difficult one to enforce. The bioretention areas are on a list, like stormwater management practices are on a list that the town keeps. And we have typically, there's a person, we're missing him right now. And so we, right now, we have an engineer that's doing two jobs, but there's typically three engineers in our engineering department. And like the junior engineer does inspections every Friday for the, almost entire summer, where they periodically check on every stormwater system that we have in our town. So they are monitored by the town through inspection.
I mean, Laura, do they go on the property and look at the condition?
Yes, yep.
They're allowed to do that?
Yeah, that's part of the easement that's granted to the town when it remains on private property.
Okay, okay, that's helpful.
Chairman Walsh, I don't see this item under discussion items, so there was one other question that I had. Should I bring that up now, or should we?
No, this would be great. Good time, Mr. Khan.
Okay, so it comes back to the, the size of this development and the water quantity, water quality assessment that needs to be done. So I guess there's two questions. If there is that clarity about that it's not necessary, why are we having the discussion and asking others for their view of that?
So.
Or is it, or is it that there is a question as to whether or not it's necessary?
Are you talking about the full SWIP?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it is, um, so Brett, you know, I've been copying on his emails to the DEC, and he does have email correspondence from Mary Berry and from the guy that is kind of the head of everywhere. But what the town was saying is that we, Mary Berry used to be the representative for DEC region four, but she's not anymore. So what we really need is clarification from our region. That's what we're waiting for. Because sometimes regions implement, they interpret codes slightly differently. So it's just important to have it from the guy that actually manages our regions, so everybody's on the same page. And that's what we were waiting for.
Okay, so, so in, so in light of that interpretive aspect of it, does the town have the ability to actually require it? Despite whatever, despite whatever the DEC might say?
Okay, so this is actually getting a cumulative impact development, which is the reason why we have that subdivision plat note that says that we're trying to take the cumulative impacts of this large parcel. we have that subdivision plat note that says that we're trying to take the cumulative impacts of this large parcel um, and make sure that we're not allowing this piecemeal, um, subdivision of it. So it's a li- it, it's a little bit unusual, but because we know there's this large parcel and we know there's this huge drainage problem, we have talked to the developer about the plat note that says that any further subdivision triggers, uh, um, you know, that would require the cumulative impact. So the question is, do you need the full SWIP now so that you have, you know, the stormwater management in, in place that can support an entire subdivision of the parcel in the future? Or, you know, can you put the bu- can you put the smaller stormwater practices in now that will reduce the quantity and quality? Uh, well, increase quality, um, do that now, and then if you do further subdivision, you're gonna have to put a detention basin or something full in later. I think that's really what that question is getting, like when is in the timeframe that you need to have the, um, stormwater infrastructure built like that? And Brett can jump in if you've got a better explanation, but I think the reason that we're doing, that we're just clarifying is because of, you know, the cumulative impacts to drainage and what the timing actually is for when we have to do the full.
Right, but, but I guess the, the key question I asked then, and thanks for describing it, and I think that's how I understand it. Does the town have the ability to actually say that we'd like to see that study now? And not at some future date? If they were to be a build out of the whole, the, the whole area?
Can I speak on that, Laura?
Yeah, um, I just.
But, 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 I think the question is, is because we're, I am agreeing not to develop this unless I come back with a major. You're putting a, you're putting a, a notation on the plot. Your TDE thought that notation was the, was a, uh, plan for a larger project, which it is not. It's only on the plan because you guys want it on the plan. So if you're gonna do this, Genghis, anybody that develops in the town that's got a hundred acre piece, he decides to develop 10 acres, he's got 90 acres left, you require him to do the exact same thing. So you can't just put it on my shoulders and not let somebody else who has the exact same facts, and you don't require him to do the same thing.
Yeah, that's correct. We would have to treat everyone equally. There's no.
Equally.
There's no.
Yeah, do, do we have a precedence for this, Laura?
Precedent? Yeah, every subdivision you've done. You didn't, you didn't walk trails, which had four phases. You didn't require, you know, on a smaller phase.
So, Genghis, to get to your question, um, I mean, the town is an MS4 community and, I mean, we do have some ability because of that to, you know, have higher regulations. But where this falls in the code is really, you know, during the subdivision, you're allowed to look, if there's a, a known drainage impact, you're allowed to look at upstream and downstream drainage. Um, and, you know, we've had that discussion that I think is the only extent that goes above and beyond, you know, DEC requirements here. Otherwise, you know, as long as we are making sure that we understand upstream and downstream impacts to the drainage, we, I don't think have the ability to overreach DEC code. The only thing we have is our subdivision code.
Yeah. And, and Lou, Lou Brett, Laura, right, I mean, we know that there's an issue here. The neighbors have raised it. Brett, I told you when you first came on, you wanna do a slam bang job here to make sure that, you know, that the neighbors all look at us and say that a good engineering job, as best as it can be done, was done here, right? And that's why, prior to the vote and the resolution, you know, uh, like I said, it was giving you a chance to show a complete picture that says, look, this is absolutely gonna work and all the boxes have been checked. That's really where I was coming from. But the point being now is, we know that we do have a drainage issue here. We know that there is concern over it. Right, we, and so the perspective I'm just taking is, how do we just make sure that we have, we've got a strategy for dealing with whatever the contingencies are that as engineers, we can forecast and plan out that would not make this problem worse in that neighborhood?
Yeah, but you. Let me, can I, can I? Yeah, yeah. Genghis, the, the, I, I totally understand, and, and to go back to Laura's point, the, the town has, um, you know, three codes right now that this falls under, falls under the subdivision code, the zoning code, and the erosion and sediment control code. Um, the erosion and sediment control code in its early days actually was written more stringent than DEC standards, I believe. Um, if I recall, that was a long time ago. Um, they eventually pulled it back to DEC standards, um, because it, it was running, we were running into problems where, you know, people were, you know, doing very tiny developments and jumping through hoops that weren't necessary. And, you know, if we're going into this, Genghis, I, I, I have listened to the neighbors every, every meeting. I've listened to everything they've had to say. Um, the issue, the main issue is along Rao Road and Vincenzo. Um, we, there is a very small portion of this development and, um, I believe, uh, Mr. Darpino can, can speak to this because he's walked the site. It actually drains in that direction. So that was the, the, the place that I looked very, very long and hard at, and, and elevations, how to set the house, which direction to divert the rain gutters in, all of that, all of those items. And, and here, here's where it becomes, uh, an, an issue. We can do things without, um, you know, going through DEC's requirements for water quantity and water quality control, that we can't do if we have to do that. And one of those things is diverting the rain gutters from this house to the 12 acres in the back that's vacant, that, so that it goes away from Vincenzo. And that's something we've done, and actually that was one of Weston Sampson's comments, to put it into the bio-retention basin. I don't wanna put it into the bio-retention basin because ultimately the bio-retention basin would drain towards Vincenzo if it were to ever overflow. I wanna put those grain gutters towards the back of the property. I want to put all of, as much impervious surface as I can on the site to the rear yard of, of Lot 2. And that is what's in the neighborhood and the neighbor's best interest, and that's how we've designed the site. Now, when we, when we come into looking at it from a, from a water quantity and water quality control, you need to take all impervious surfaces and put them into a DEC standardized, um, practice. And that is why DEC offers you that flexibility between 1 and 5 acres. And, um, do you mind if I, can I present something real quick, Laura? Um.
Go ahead.
Let's see, uh.
Hey, Brett, when you're presenting, can you also ask, can you also talk about the other two questions we heard at the privilege of the floor for whether or not the bio-retention basin can handle the 10 and 100-year storm and the.
Yeah, I did speak about that earlier, but I could talk about it again.
Okay.
Um. Okay, can you see what I'm, I'm looking at now, the, the, the permit? Up on the screen. Um, and, and I highlighted the section, this is what I sent to Jamie, and he never responded to me after this point. I was talking to him consistently the other one morning, uh, via email, and I sent this to him, and then he never responded. Um, construction activities that require preparation of a SWIP that only includes erosion and sediment control measures, which is what we've provided. Um, and this is, this is the criteria for that. Any construction activities that involve soil disturbances of one or more acres less than 5 acres that are single-family homes not located within with, in one of the watersheds listed in Appendix C and not directly discharging to a 303D listed in Appendix E, or single-family residential subdivisions with 25% or less impervious cover at the total site buildout and not located in one of the watersheds in Appendix C or directly contributing. That, that highlighted area there is exactly what we have. We have a subdivision, we have uh, 2.5 acres of disturbance and overall on the entire site, the total site buildout, which is the four lots on the 17.7 acres. Um, you have, uh, I think it's 0.75 acres of impervious area with all the rooftops, driveways and et cetera. And ends up being about, um, about 4% of impervious area. So we meet that criteria, and that's why I'm very confident that, that this is not required. Now, by not requiring this, it allows us the flexibility to, to preserve and, and minimize that drainage to Vincenzo. And I think, you know, when we get together with Weston Sampson, um, you know, we can do that, and that's why I asked this question two weeks ago to, uh, to the TDE, and I never did. I never heard back from him, and I understand there have been things going on with trying to get Jamie Malcolm uh, in, in charge with this, but the, the, um, I think once we get that to, to that point and, um, you know, I don't, I don't foresee, but it, it, any issues, um, if you can give me one minute here, I'll bring up the, the, uh, the tables which show, which talk about the, um, give me one minute. I'm just going to, is that showing the tables? Like, I can't see what it's showing on mine. Is that showing the tables or is that still showing the permit?
No, it's still showing.
It's still showing the permit?
Yeah.
Um. Okay. I'm gonna stop presenting and present something else here. Okay.
Brett, while you're pulling that up, I just have a question about this bio-retention basin. The, with respect to the questions raised by Weston and Sampson, can you say, or can we agree on whether, are we in agreement between and Weston Sampson on how the bio-retention basins should be constructed?
To some extent, um, I, again, this is a modified practice solely for the purpose of attenuating stormwater. Um, if you look at the amount of drainage area that is going to that, we have a very small section of driveway and front lawn going to a bio-retention basin that is gonna cost Mr. Leacy several thousand dollars to, probably more than that, probably tens of thousands of dollars to build by the time he landscapes it and mulches it and puts the soils in. Um, just to pick up the drainage from the first 100 feet of driveway and the front lawn. I've got all of the house drainage and actually the, the, the area, the paved area around the, the garage, uh, discharging towards the rear of the parcel. We have, it's, it's an incredibly small area. You're, and when I looked at the actual volume of runoff.
A necessary aspect of, of the, the stormwater.
It, it, it is, it is a necessary aspect to, to appease the issues with Vincenzo Drive. And, and that was what we set out to do in the very beginning. And if you look at the tables that you have in front of you, you can see, you know, the two-year storm, we have 100% reduction in the peak runoff rate. The 10-year storm, we have a 95% reduction in the peak runoff rate, and that's how fast the water is moving off the site. And then the 100-year storm, an 84% reduction in the peak runoff rate. And then we went even further and talked about runoff volumes, even though neither code requires us to look at runoff volumes. I wanted to make sure for my edification and for Mr. Leacy's edification that he doesn't have problems down the road, um, that, that we're reducing the actual amount of runoff off the site. And that's one of the reasons that I chose a bio-retention basin over the gravel drainage, because you put water in gravel, if it's not going into the ground, it's not going anywhere, it's eventually going to find its way to, to, to somewhere. If you put water in a bio-retention basin, you have trees, you have plants, you have evapotranspiration occurring, which gives the, which, which actually, uh, takes up some of that water. And if you look, we've got, again, 100% reduction in the runoff reduction volume for the two-year storm. A 84% reduction in the runoff reduction volume for the 10-year storm and a 48% reduction. Um, and, and nobody's disputed these values or numbers, um, in Weston Sampson's report. They were just looking for some of the engineering details on the bio-retention basin, which we will work through with them, um, on, you know, what we feel is, is necessary to make sure that we achieve this. Um, certainly directing the gutters from the house into this bio-retention basin is not what we wanna do, and that's, that's again, something that we need to work through with them and which would be required if we did have to do the water quality and water quantity, um, requirements. Patrick, I've actually asked Brett to design this larger than what I need it for, correct, Brett? Yes.
And, and Brett, w- when, when you talk about the, um, composition of the bio-retention basin and how you prefer to see, um, more, um, plantings that are absorbing the, uh, the runoff as opposed to gravel that's redirecting it. Is that why we're not 100% seeing an agreement on the, the, the construction of the, the, the composition of the bio-retention basin?
That, that is, that is correct, because that bio-retention basin sits quite low. And, and DEC standards, in order to achieve, what, what happens is, in order to achieve a, um, water quality, they allow you to pond six inches and then they want you to discharge it. In this particular case, I don't want it discharged. I wanna pond it, and we have actually a couple of feet there where we could even pond water and just wait for the, the plantings. Now, to, to give you an idea, the 100-year storm, when we get seven inches of rainfall, you would get one foot of water in that bio-retention basin. And that's, and the reason, the, and that's, that's a lot of water. You're gonna get, that's, I, I mean, you, we all remember Hurricane Irene and, and those situations, how much water there was standing in, in low areas and around. That is, and I'm designing it that way intentionally to pond over that six inches so that we can, again, meet the, meet the demands and the requirements of, of the residents on Vincenzo. And if we do have to go back to designing it and meeting the requirements of the DEC, um, New York State Stormwater Design Manual for a bio-retention basin, which we can do. Um, and it wouldn't, probably wouldn't take up any additional area. It just might, um, alter these numbers slightly where there're not quite as much reduction, but they would still be a reduction and still meet all of the intent and quality of a permit.
Okay. Thank you, Brett.
Actually, I'm sorry. So, so Brett, um, just one dumb question on your charts. On columns two, two, three and four of each chart, what does the EX mean?
Existing condition.
Okay.
That's the existing condition during the, looking at the very first line.
I got it, I just, I just, I just wanted to verify. I didn't, I didn't want you to mean something that was more exemplary or something else. But that is actually calculated on the existing condition.
That's correct. Just as you would any drainage study.
Yep.
You know, comparing the pre and post development.
Yep, I just wanted to verify the acronym itself.
Okay. Are we all set with this?
Yeah, we're okay with, uh, what you're presenting, Brett. A question I would have, and I appreciate Laura jumping in and helping me out here. Is there any other questions or comments from privilege of the floor regarding this matter that we need to address? Laura, are you satisfied? I mean, some of them, um, obviously, um, would be included in response to Weston and Sampson.
Yeah. Yes, I think Brett, Brett just showed the, I think Brett just showed the, um, the question about the two-year, 10-year and 100-year. So that was really helpful. Thanks, Brett. I guess the only other question, and I know that we have looked at these, um, we've looked at these contours before, and it looked like if you're looking at these two-foot contours, that all of the property is draining away from Antonia towards like the sort of center of this property where we know there's not any current, um, subdivision plan, and we know that there's some wetland in, um, at least an intermittent stream. But is it possible that there's, um, kind of like, I don't know, micro grade that's causing ponding behind the best gen property? Have you specifically looked at that, Brett? Like, maybe you could just go out and just see if there's.
I, I will go look at it. It could very well, it could very well be actually a, a small area, possibly even on their property where it's not draining off of their property on to Mr. Leacy's property in ponding there. Um, I don't know. I can go out and take a look at it based on all the information I have and the times I've walked the site. Everything appears to pitch, uh, actually at, at a pretty good rate um, from south to north through the parcel, um, towards, uh, towards Vinantor Drive.
And those are two-foot contours, right? I'm just wondering. I mean, sometimes contours are almost a illusion. Like, I had an engineer come to my property and he's like, oh, the water's gonna drain like that. And I'm like, no, it's not. So I mean, it's, you know, it could be an illusion, but if, if it's worth it, can you just go see if there's some kind of a micro contour or something? I'm making a.
Yeah, I can, I can look at that. And, you know, it could very well be, um, but when you're looking at two-foot contours, if you are looking at a micro, it's exactly it. What the word micro means, it's a very small area because you can generally see that we're pitching down, I think, from 404 down to like 392 across the width of that property. Um, so.
So I guess, and then just make sure that, you know, that if there is something funny just right in that area, that there isn't anything that is going in that direction, I guess.
That, that, we'll make sure that the proposed development doesn't alter that in any way.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay.
I think that's everything.
Thanks, Laura. Any other questions from the board? We turned it, this into a discussion item, but that's great, uh, because we didn't have it down. We probably should have. Um, so since we're on the subject, is there anything else, uh, for the applicant, the applicant's engineer? Are there any board questions? No, you have anything else, Brett or Mr. Leacy?
No, I'm all set. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time this evening, and we'll work with, um, Joe and make sure that we get all your concerns addressed before the public hearing.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Thank you. I'm good. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Okay, thank you. And we'll move on, uh, to the rest of the discussion items. The next being 2220 Crescent Road Site Plan Approval for a Cosmetology-Electrology Store by Ms. Gail King. Now note that, um, Ms. King has joined in, um, on the meeting in case we need to talk to her. Yep, she's there. All right, so I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Khan.
Right. And, and so, you, you know, the, we still haven't gotten the dimension drawings from Frank, but in light of that, you know, Laura, myself, uh, Clark, and also you, Chairman Wash, available. We were supposed to go today to actually, uh, look at the site, particularly looking for some kind of recommendation that we can make about on-street parking. Correct? And, um, I think the weather wasn't cooperating at the time when we needed to go, so I think we're gonna try to do that later in the week. Um, but I think we need to actually be able to have some line of sight to what kind of recommendation we'll make relative to on-street parking for this entire area. Um, but pending that, you, you know, this, the site plan looks as drawn with the new parking spots on the site and with the herbage and the, um, and the pond on there, um. Everything looks fine. I mean, the only, the only other concern I would have had was just the, if we assume for a moment that the parking for this property is only going to be what is, that there's no on-street parking involved, which one of the spots are gonna be handicap parking delineated and really what's the condition of the walkways to get to the handicap ramp coming from that back part of the property? The part of the property adjacent to the alleyway, the parking adjacent to the alleyway, but, um, so I could just, you know, pause there for a minute and, and we can get any discussion.
Correct. Uh, thank you, Mr. Khan. Yeah, I agree. I mean, it seems like we're in pretty good shape except for the, the Crescent parking. Um, and I think we're also still waiting on something from an engineering review, um, I believe that's in-house, Laura.
Um, yeah, I can have Clark speak to that. I know he's been working really closely with Gail and Frank, but, um, Gail, can you hear me? So, you're muted. Um, if you just hover your, um, cursor over your screen or click on it if it's a touchscreen, you should get a ribbon at the bottom that pops up that says Planning Board and Zoning Commission. Then there'll be like a little microphone, then there'll be, uh, like a kind of a red hang-up button. Don't click that. Then there'll be like a little video. So there's like three buttons in the middle of that white ribbon. The one on the left, that sort of looks like a microphone, if you click that, it'll unmute you. It'll probably be highlighted red right now for you.
I need, I need to go to the bar at the bottom of my, uh, uh, screen and click, and then it came up. Sometimes it doesn't come up when you slide down, if you haven't done it once.
Well, she's looking for that. Can you just speak to some of the changes on the site and, and the updates that you've had with her and Frank?
Yeah, sure, sure Laura. Actually, most of the updates are relative to their, all, not really alternate proposal, but their discussion about possibly having parking on Crescent. That's mostly what they've been doing recently. Although I did see late this afternoon, I think Frank Herba sent an email that may have identified which of the park, parking spaces along the alley would be the handicap spot. So there's really a couple of different things going on. I, I would say their official submission has the six parking spaces along the alley that at the last planning board meeting, we asked them to add dimensions to those six spaces to further define them and just add some more general dimensions to the site plan drawing that they had.
Yeah.
He's, he's in the process of doing that, and he may have even sent that late, late this afternoon. Then they've got kind of a, another, um, proposal, I guess, or concept really, of adding parking along Crescent Road that would benefit, um, the upper not-speed area in general. And then he has kind of a third proposal that he was sketching up, which would be to just put the handicap parking spot, um, on the side of the 2220 Crescent Road building that Gail is proposing to purchase. So he would actually have a driveway off of Crescent Road going to this handicap parking space in that little triangular piece of, of their property. And he was trying to see if that could dimensionally fit in that corner. So-
Right.
There's kind of two concepts and one official proposal, I would say.
Yeah, and I saw, and I saw that, um, on that third one you mentioned, which has that, that standalone, um, handicap spot. We're still gonna have to bring a pathway across the front of the building to get to the ramp, right?
Right, exactly.
So, 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 so look, I, I, i- if I have to make a little bit of a critique on all of this, it's just that at the end of the day, we're dealing with three sets of drawings. I'm actually only primarily focused on the official one that's been submitted. Right? Knowing fully well that as a planning board, we do need to make some kind of a recommendation on Crescent Road parking, right? But the, the key, the key thing is that, you know, having three drawings floating around, okay, it's easy, I can keep track of it, but the point is, is that, you know, we need to be decisive at some point as to exactly which one we want to propose, right? So-
Yeah, I think Laura and I totally agree with that, and we've instructed Frank accordingly.
Right. Um, for the existing application drawing, you know, and, and I didn't raise this the last time, but, but, you know, but I'll do it now. I- if we are sticking with the parking on the alleyway that he put in there, I, I do recall from walking the site that, 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 you know, the pathway to the handicap ramp is- That's me. Can you hear me? My computer? Did I do it?
Yeah, just keep turning the volume on, turn it right down.
Oh geez. Hang on. Okay, now can you still hear me? Wow.
So, Gail?
Yeah.
If you can turn the volume on your computer off, not unmute, like turn the echo volume on your-
Was she, was Gail on the phone in on the computer, Laura?
Yeah, that's where you get that.
Yeah.
So, Gail, I think you might have muted your phone. You actually just want to turn the volume off on your computer. Uh, Gail, if you want, you can type what you want to say in the chat. There's a chat box if you feel like we're missing something. But I think that, um, what, what we're kind of getting at is, I mean, the plan, we have a couple of plans. Um, we're gonna hone in on one, and we want to separate the on-street parking of Crescent because just of the timing on that, I think it's gonna take so long. We want to look at that and on a corridor-wide basis, which is what Clark was talking to Frank about. But as long as you can fit everything on your property, the next step for the planning board is to call for a final site plan approval.
Right.
Correct. Mr. Khan, I guess, uh, where you're at, um, if the, if they try to put the handicapped into that area, now obviously that might change, uh, the engineering. It has to be done, whether or not that, you know, impacts the water, the landscaping that's been proposed. So, that's something, you know, we need to come through, uh, you know, which is the handicap spot, and is it workable where it's located? Can they get from point A to point B?
Right, exactly. I mean, my, my, my expectation, just within the context of the, again, the, the, the application drawing, is that I would expect the closest spot to the walkway, you know, the closest spot in the alley to the walkway becomes the handicap spot, and that's why we want to actually see the dimensions to make sure that we can put in a handicap spot there, right? Because I think it'll change the total parking count.
Yep.
Agreed, right? And, um, and then, like I said, the only other thing is, from what I recall about the, you know, the paved surface that gets to that handicap ramp, it was a little uneven, right? There was, you know, and we could look at that when we go look again. So there might have to be some renovation to that that would need to be done for the safety of a person who is disabled walking down that, um, that path. Um, so, so I think that's the bottom line to, to Frank, you know, Clark. It's just, you know, for the drawing, that's the application in front of us. Or that one, or the other one he has with the red area to the, you know, on the other side of the building. Just decide on one and let us see what the implication is.
Sure. So the, um, our next meeting again isn't until June 8th, so we got about a month out there, Mr. Khan.
Yeah.
You know, we're gonna try probably Thursday, based on the weather, to get together to, to do a site walk. Um, and then if we come up with something like the sidewalk needs to be fixed in order to make it handicap accessible, um, I mean, that's something we can condition as long as we get, uh, something from the Nigerian department that says that they're all set in general. Uh, they've reviewed the plan and they're okay.
Agreed. And, and that's the, you know, that's where, you know, my path is on this, right? At the end of the day, both our recommendation for on-street Crescent parking, you, you know, though, that, that could be in a completely different timeline for, for, um, for Gail and Frank completing what is onsite and ready for them to actually get a site plan, um, approval, uh, resolution.
Okay.
So, but it's just that, like I said, it's, there's still a deficiency to date with that existing application and the handicap parking and the dimensions that go along with it.
Right. So I guess, um, let me put it this way. So for the June 8th meeting, we'll have a resolution calling for final site plan approval for 2220 Crescent Road. Is there anybody that's opposed to that?
Tentative, right, tentative, yeah.
Right, as long as-
Yeah, tentative resolution.
As long as we have-
We got a month-
That are satisfactory for that, right?
And I know Gail, uh, is having trouble here, but Gail, you know, uh, I think it's, uh, I think you would concur with that. Uh, we'll do the site visit and any open items. We'll make sure, uh, they have a, a reasonable path to closure. We'll go ahead with the resolution. Otherwise, we, it's tentative. We can always pull the resolution if there's a problem. Okay.
And, and did we ever get a chance to find out if the tenant has vacated that property, that apartment?
No, I think that was one of the things Gail was gonna speak to. Um, Clark and I will follow up with her. Apologize for the problems. Um, I know she even was on here with her phone, but it couldn't get her back. So we'll follow up with her and do the site meeting and have hopefully everything buttoned up by June.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, we're really hindering this in the fact that the meeting's a month away, and so hopefully we can get it all done. And that's why I'd like us to go out there earlier, sooner than later.
Hello?
Oh, there you are.
Hello?
Hi Gail, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Oh my gosh, I'm watching you all the way through this, and then I, I, I'm speaking and you're not hearing me, so I'm so glad you're hearing me now.
So are we, Gail.
All right. Laura, did you want to summarize or?
Yeah. I don't know if you heard, Gail, but basically what we said, we called for a tentative resolution for the June 8th meeting for final site plan approval. Uh, we want to do a site walk. We're concerned, uh, again, in making sure that we have the dimensions of the parking spots and the location of the handicap spot. And that the path to the front door from the handicap spot is suitable for, you know, a person to be able to get from point A to point B. So those are things we'll take a look at during our, uh, site visit. Um, and if you're-
Okay, I would, yes, I would like for you to look at it. I do have a, a, a new drawing that I got today, and I thought it was dropped off at the, but maybe you guys went there. Uh, in putting the, um, the handicap spot on the, uh, east side, which is less intrusive and, uh, easier to get at, uh, easier to make it handicap. And, um, it could almost be all natural with very little, um, uh, access walk needed. Um, I know that the access is through, um, through town, uh, town access, and whatever you do with that, you'll have to, um, you can decide that later. But if we could go ahead and get this approved to have the handicap on the east side, um, I would appreciate it, and then we can move forward. Hopefully, um, the town will open up the, um, the regulations that are required for building at this time. Um, so, anything you guys could do to help us, um, with that access and, and get that approved on the east side instead of the west side. Does that make sense?
Well, once we, once we get it, Gail, um, you know, Mr. Khan will all take a look at it. They say it was submitted today. We haven't received it yet. Uh, meeting pack, it went out on Friday, so.
I think, Gail, there was a, there was a tentative sketch. Henry, uh, Clark, this is the tentative sketch that, that you had sent out, right? What they call the one-touch.
Yes, yes, it is.
So, so Gail, in, in that proposal, that drawing that, that was supposed to get, uh, sent in today, is there gonna be a new driveway that needs to be put in?
Well, it would be, uh, uh, more like an access parking area. The rest of it would be on, um, town access. But it would be a, it would be a driveway. I don't know how, I don't know how far that is. It's not very much.
So, Gail, to Mr. Khan's point, um, if you do put more impervious surface on the parcel, you may have to add that into some of your stormwater calculations, but um, it's hard to do this, I think, electronic, or over the video conference meeting, and I know we still have a pretty big agenda item to get to. So I think probably what makes the most sense is to, to take a look at both parking areas in the field um, with your engineer, figure out, you know, which one works the best for the building, and then if any additional stormwater stuff has to take place if you're gonna pave a space next to the building.
Yeah, it would actually help the, help the stormwater. It all goes downhill at that point, so it, it fits right in with the landscape. So I think it's more, um, it looks better. It's less material and it works better.
Okay, so I think-
Did they say they were coming out on Thursday?
Yeah, it's moved to Thursday, right, Clark?
Yeah, yeah, so Thursday sometime, I think we could probably get started sometime, maybe after 11:00? Between 11:00 and 11:30?
Can you give me a call before you, before you do that? So I can be there?
Yes, we'll send out an invite, um, and make sure that everybody knows when the date and time is, and then obviously, I have to say this because I work for the town, like you're gonna have to wear appropriate personal protective equipment and practice social distancing. We'll be outside, so it's okay. It's better, but still, if you, you know, wear masks and then just be cognizant of everybody else who's around you, but um, I still think that it, we can safely do a site walk on Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay, after 11:00, you said?
I will finalize it and send it out in an email to you, Frank, Jangus, Kevin, and Clark, and any of the other planning board that want to come.
Okay. That sounds good.
Thanks, Laura. Sorry for all the trouble.
Yeah, I got every piece of equipment you could imagine here, so I'm finally glad to talk to you. We'll figure, we'll figure this out before they get the, the virus cleared, right?
Yes, we will.
Yeah, unfortunately, yes, we will figure it out before we get the virus cleared.
Okay, guys, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you Laura, thank you, and Mr. Khan, appreciate it. All right, anything further on 2220 Crescent? Okay. Right, uh, that brings us to 2538 River Road Average Density Development-
Okay, I'm out.
Uh, thank you, Gail. Average Density Development Special Use Permit and Major Subdivision Application for Kels Farm. Um, and, um, uh, and this is, uh, project leads are Mr. Diopino and Mr. McPartland. I don't know if they want to, um, kick it off, or we just want to get right to the applicant. Um, Joel? Is Joel still online?
Yes, I am.
Okay, hi Joel.
Hi guys. And Laura.
So Joel, you want to take it away?
Yes, okay, uh, Laura, could you put up the latest and greatest, uh, plot plan?
Yes. For us coming. You can talk while I'm working on it.
Okay, the, uh, the changes that we made since the last meeting is that we removed lot number 25. We're back to 24 lots. And we converted that area that was labeled as Lot 25 to a anticipated stormwater area. So that stormwater area essentially be an extension of the, um, the wetlands. Uh, we revised the bike path based on the CME, the Creighton-Manning, uh, traffic recommendation. And you'll see that we have a crossing, we call that loop now, uh, Kels Farm Road and the connection Windsor Drive. And we, um, we cross on the north side and we come to the inner loop, and then we go north-south along river. And the CME recommendation was to cross into Blatnick at the main entrance of Blatnick, because that's where, um, traffic and people would expect the crossing. So that is based on a traffic, uh, recommendation. I don't want to preempt, uh, Mark's, uh, traffic study, but one other small point is that we have to take down that hill where the previous farmhouse was. One other small point is that we have to take down that hill where the previous farmhouse was. And put a uh deed restriction on that sight line. And if we do that, then coming out that north side, the loop. We really don't have to have that median in there because uh we can either do a left-hand turn to north or right-hand turn to the south. Okay, and you know, from the public comments, I just wanted to clear up a few major misconceptions. A lot of people said that it's a high density. It is not high density. It's an average density with a large forested buffer. You know, we could get twenty-four lots on this with an R-one subdivision. We chose not to do that. So that we'd have a large forested buffer for the neighborhood. Uh, we are not touching any of the wetlands. You could see from this plot plan. That with the double ninety in the road, that we do not have to do any wetland mitigation. So I just wanna keep repeating that, you know. I've been in Niskiuna for twenty-eight years, and I remember Windsor Drive when it was a wood. And with a high percentage of wetlands, so Windsor Drive was a wetland, much wetter than this property. Okay, so and some people said that there is no benefit to the town from this, which really kinda appalled me, you know. Uh, I mean, I'm paying a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in lot fees. We're building a fifteen-inch main sewer line that takes the septic waste from these Windsor properties. And if I didn't do that, that that cost me of hundreds of thousands of dollars, that would have to be borne by the town. And the town would have to get my permission, which would cost a lot more too. So, and then there's the issue of the assessment values in the schools. Well. There's twenty-four lots times, say, an average uh, based on my marketing plan, house of about four hundred fifty thousand dollars. So that's a ten-point-eight million dollar assess- assessment value increase. I would, I I'd like to see that uh, that study, Laura, that they did for the assessors did to see. You know, how that compares with the ten-point-eight million dollar, you know, projected increase in assessed value. But I don't think it would compare. And then, of course, there's the bike path and the crossing, the benefits to the whole town. And that's, that, that addresses the comprehensive plan connectivity to the bike path, to the town center. It's really a huge benefit to the town. Okay, and that's borne by me, all right? And these houses are targeted for empty nesters, you know, people like myself. Uh, I don't wanna mention other names, but there's a huge demand for these townhouses and these smaller ranches. Okay, the executive ranches, all right, for people like myself that, you know, have the McMansions. And we wanna downsize and still live in Niskiuna, so I kinda, I'm kinda put off by people that say that there's no benefit from this uh subdivision. I see tremendous benefit. Um, I am against the road connection and that, I've said that many times. And I think the bike path is imperative, all right? So with that, um, I don't know if uh David or. Uh, I have any uh questions for me before we kick off with Mark?
Uh, I don't have any questions. Anybody on the board? Very none. Why don't we go ahead with Mr. Ned only? Natalie, Ned only?
Yeah, great, thank you. Um, Laura, I don't know if you wanna leave that up and might uh, might help my, my presentation as well, so um. Uh, just to introduce myself, my name is Mark Ned only. I'm an associate with Creighton Manning Engineering. And uh, Joel did hire us to do the traffic assessment for their site. Um, we're looking at twenty-four residential uh units, um, ten single family and then fourteen townhomes. Um, with a, you know, this loop road that provides access at two points on on River Road. And you can see that the two uh, single-family homes uh to the north that have direct access to River Road as well. Um, so the first thing we did was look at existing conditions of River Road, uh, speeds on River Road, volumes in the area. And I just, I do wanna correct uh the volume information that we do, that we used. While in the appendix, we did include the DOT count from two thousand and fifteen. We actually used traffic count data from two thousand and nineteen and uh October of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, we obviously didn't wanna go out there and not do any traffic counts because the uh, with the, you know, restrictions for work. Uh, we, you know, obviously volumes are are different, so we were able to find a company that has historic traffic count information in the area. So we, we went back to two thousand and nineteen in October. Um, we focused our assessment on the aim and the P and peak hours of this site, just because it coincides with. The peak hour of the adjacent street, the peak hour of typical homes, which also usually uh line up with commuter times. And the peak hours of the uh, the schools in the area. Um, based on that assessment, we looked at how much traffic that this site will generate on its own. Um, during the AMP hour, these twenty-four homes will generate approximately nineteen trips in the morning. That's just during one hour. Obviously, it's gonna generate, generate traffic on either side of that one hour, worst case. And in the afternoon, the worst-case PMP guy will generate approximately twenty-one trips. So the existing roadway network can accommodate the additional traffic generated by this development. And so we're, we're confident there's no offsite mitigation necessary to address those approximately twenty trips during peak times. Um, in terms of the site distance analysis we conducted, um, as Joel did indicate, we recommended some clearing. Uh, just north of the uh northern uh Kelts Farm Road driveway. Uh, and that was to uh remove some of a, of an embankment around that horizontal curve. By doing that, there would be adequate site distance for all four access points on River Road uh for the operating speed, which is approximately fifty miles an hour. So that was the only site distance mitigation we had recommended. And in terms of the bike path, Joel did mention it, we uh, we kinda, we kicked it around the office for quite a bit and and. Decided that the best location was uh at Blatnik Park's driveway. Um, and uh, not only are we recommending providing this new connection, we would eliminate the existing connect uh. Uh, um, crosswalk on River Road that's located, you know, maybe six hundred feet to the south. So we're not adding any new crossings. We would tie in that existing multi-use path to this location. So it's, it's, we would make it a little bit more visible. Um, right now, it kinda crosses at an angle. We'd cross it right at the, the park driveway, right where uh you, you would expect pedestrians to be. Um, we recommend appropriate signing at the crosswalk. We even recommended Joel put in some lighting. For uh, you know, nighttime uh visibility uh for drivers. And we're also in coordination with the county. We're gonna meet with them hopefully sometime this week to talk about, just to make sure we're on the same page with the county, since this is a county road. And to address any of their concerns as well. Um, so uh, we'll include that on the plans if they have any, any changes. Now, in terms of the uh, the cut through, uh. I'm gonna be repeating a lot of the information that was uh regurgitated in the, in the emails. Uh, most of it was pretty accurate. Um, however, I do wanna emphasize that this development couldn't move forward with or without that connection. It's not a necessary piece in order to move forward. And and like uh Joel said, you know, his preferred is not to include that connection. However, since the, this connection was uh referenced in the, the, the town com plan. We did wanna provide some assessment to, to show the public what sort of impact it could have. Um, and again, we did use that, the two thousand and nineteen data in order to determine how much traffic could potentially shift. From River Road to Windsor Drive. Um, and as some of the uh, the residents noted. Going from point A to point B, point A being, you know, just south of this development, uh, River Road. To point B, which would be that all-way stop uh intersection at Van Antwerp, uh Windsor Drive and uh east or Knott Street East. There's about sixteen hundred trips that are sort of using that, that um, that path. With about a thousand of them staying on River Road and the other six hundred already sort of cutting through the residential developments. Uh, they're coming through on Riverdale, they're coming through on uh Catherine uh Wood Drive. Um, and those six hundred trips are already sort of cutting through, but those thousand, those, the other thousand is staying on River Road. Um, now, providing that direct, more direct connection from Windsor Drive through this development. To uh, River Wood provide a, you know, a time savings to these, to these motorists. You, you cut your drive time from two and a half minutes to about two minutes and forty seconds, and you reduce that by about a minute and ten. And so you will shift traffic over to Windsor Drive by doing that. Sort of as a worst-case assessment, we did push about ninety percent of that traffic. So ninety percent of, of a thousand trips is about nine hundred trips is what most of those people were, were quoting over the course of an entire day. Uh, during your peak times, we're looking at about shifting a hundred and fifty to a hundred and twenty trips, depending on the peaks. So again, that's that twenty-five to thirty percent increase on Windsor Drive during peak times. And while we acknowledge that, you know, the lane widths of Windsor Drive, the shoulder widths of Windsor Drive. Could accommodate that, that additional traffic without failing. Um, and the, the all-way stop. Intersection at Van Antwerp and in Windsor Drive and and Knott Street could accommodate the sort of shift in traffic. Um, it, it can handle that capacity-wise, but again, we did note it, note that. Windsor Drive is uh, functionally classed as a local, urban local road. And changing the character of this road would be inherent by providing that connection, because we would be inviting some more through traffic on that road. Now, by doing that and adding, you know, an additional, you know, nine hundred trips onto Windsor Drive. Would start to push this draw, this roadway into a uh collector road type of a classification. So again, we're not advocating one way or the other. We're, we're pretty much just giving the, the planning board the information that had been requested. And it's our feeling that you should need to make a determination whether or not those travel time benefits to the general public. Outweigh any sort of uh perceived impacts that the, the residents of, of, you know, in and around Windsor Drive are going to experience due to increased traffic. So it's a, 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 a general summary of, of our assessment, and I can definitely answer any questions that you have.
Hey, Laura. This is Chris. Mark, that was a great overview assessment. I, a couple of clarifying questions. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
So of the nine hundred increase. Would, would that, is that number replacing the traffic that's going through Riverdale and Chestnut and, you know, that, that back way? Fox Hollow? Those folks, or is that a portion of those folks and maybe some incremental?
No, that would be in addition to the existing six hundred that's already doing it. So you've got six hundred already, already have sort of found that. That, that, that little bit easier, maybe shorter path, and they're willing to make those turns. Right now, going through those, then residential neighborhoods is not a straight shot. You've gotta make, you know, several turns to get there. And I think some people just wanna put the, the car on cruise control and go up River Road to the traffic circle, make one turn, and you're down. Uh, and, and so right now, you're at a, at about a sixty-five percent split, thirty-five percent split going each way. And of the sixty-five percent that are, that's going north, you're gonna, there's potential to shift a lot of that traffic to, to, to this new connection. Because you're gonna reduce the number of turns and it's gonna be a little bit more of a, of a straight shot for them.
Okay, fair enough. That, that, I just wanna confirm that part. So in ru- in like, same numbers, different perspective. Today, we have five hundred and eighty-eight in the AM. That's about nine-point-eight cars per minute. That's to go from nine-point-eight or, or ten to, to twelve. I think we're gonna see about two and a half cars more a minute. On with the. Each morning during the peak hour.
Yep, so you, and that's twenty-five to thirty percent increase, so.
To twelve and a half cars.
Yes. So it's, you know, it, it depends on, is it significant to you? Maybe not, but is it significant to a resident? Maybe, you know, it's, it's all uh in terms of perspective. In terms of traffic, you know, it can handle it. But again, you may be changing the, the, the sort of character of the road at, you know, overall.
Yeah, I, I, I get that. The part that I'm struggling with is, as I sit and watch ten cars go by. To navigate my turn, I'm not sure how many two more cars impacts the value of the home. I, I'm just trying to think it through and, and you know, some of my peers and I were kicking this around earlier. And I, I think of some other streets in Niskiuna, like, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but like Whammer connects Roughner to Row. And Route, a very long street, you get a lot of traffic. When that connection was made, I think the impact to Row was probably significantly more than this. But it just made logical sense, for the purpose of connectivity of neighborhoods. Um, so I'm just, I just wanna review the math with you, just so I understood, as I'm sitting there watching eight cars go by or nine cars go by. That I'm looking at twelve cars going by, you know, and I just wanted to see if I was accurate. That's all. Thank you.
That's right, yeah.
So, 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 so Mark, could you, could you restate that, the, the, how we got to that two-car increment?
So essentially, over the, so. In the AMP power, there's about a hundred and seventy trips, uh, if Laura had that, that one uh map up. That was using the purple line, sort of going around using the traffic circle. Now, if you, if you moved ninety percent of a hundred and seventy, you're down to about a hundred and fifty trips. So a hundred and fifty divided by sixty is about two to two, you know, sixty minutes. Is about two to two and a half trips per minute. So that's essentially where that math comes from. So if you're moving a hundred and fifty trips from River onto, onto Windsor, sixty minutes in an hour. So that a hundred and fifty trips divided over sixty minutes is about two, two and a half trips a minute.
During the peak hours?
During the peak hours, yes.
Okay, I just, thanks. I just wanted you to, you know, to, to just be able to make it clear and say it. I, I guess the question I have is, the ninety percent split that you did for the thousand cars on a daily basis. Go for the River Road to the circle, to the intersection. Wh- what was the basis behind that ninety percent number?
There, I mean, there's no, there's no telling how many people are gonna do it. Um, but if you make it convenient enough, people will find it. I think your GPS will start to push you that way because of time savings. Um, but again, we didn't want to underestimate uh the, the number of trips. So even if you went, say you knocked it down to seventy trips, you're still, or eight or seventy percent, you're still gonna be in the. Two, two additional trips per minute range, you know. Just changing the number by ten or, ten or fifteen percent's not gonna change. The overall impact of that much. Um, so, I mean, you, you could play with that, that percentage. But there's no real way to know how much is gonna shift, other than knowing people find the, the, the fastest path.
Well, Mark, um, if I may, you kind of started this discussion. And first of all, say, I really appreciate the input and I, I do really like the. Um, concrete suggestions we've made, you've made, um, especially as it relates to the multi-use path. Uh, I think that whole plan has completely evolved. Um, but, but getting back to your worst-case scenario, in your old words, of the percent diverting. Um, from, from their path through the traffic circle at GE Research currently. You started this conversation by saying. There is a certain number of people who are the set and forget it types. They just wanna take the, the highway route. They don't wanna cut through different neighborhoods. They don't wanna take a lot of ninety-degree turns. And stop signs, stop and go traffic. They wanna cruise at forty-five miles per hour and just take the easy route. So I guess, following that logic, who's to say that all of the, the vehicular traffic. That prefers to take the fastest route possible isn't already doing so. By way of the existing available alternate routes. And thus, by adding a third alternate route through Windsor Drive. You're just adding more options for the fifty percent of people who already have chosen that's their preferred mode of travel. Whereas the fifty percent who are currently preferring, preferring to travel on River Road will continue to do so.
It's a fair point. Um, this connection is a little more, it does not have as many turns as the other, as the other options. So I, I think that is the biggest difference, where you may have one or two turns here, where the other options are, you know, four or five turns to get to the same, to get to the same spot. Um.
So, so I think to Patrick's point, then maybe a better number going through that would actually be the six hundred number. Right? The ones who already made the choice to go through a torturous path.
But meaning versus ninety percent, go fifty percent?
No, I mean, I would take a hundred percent of the six hundred people that go down the tortured curvy streets, right?
Probably depends on which direction they come from.
Yeah, it, and we're not, I don't think this is, this is a question I have too for Mark. Are we factoring in the, the negative impact to that intersection of Van Antwerp and Windsor? From the interior? From the interior people, people having an option out to River Road? So in other words, there's a lot of folks that just go by way of Van Antwerp because they can't go the other direction on Windsor.
I'm trying to think about what what you're saying.
You know what? It's too, it's too immeasurable, meaning no matter what, they're touching Windsor, so it's still a trip on Windsor.
Yes.
Yeah, so never, yeah, so never mind, but it depends on where they're coming, like like Mo said, where they're coming in.
The the assessment did look at important points around the entire area. So we did try to capture. I know there was some question about whether or not we were capturing people from the casino and whatnot. We did, it wasn't just an A and B. It was all the way around the intersection. So we were capturing everyone. Um, but like you said, I mean, in the old days, we would have done this with like a license plate survey, trying to match up license plates from intersection to intersection. This is, you know, using cell phone data, you know, you know, identifying markers. So the the data is pretty good. And, you know, we we could say it's ten percent up, twenty percent down. In general, I think you you kind of understand the impacts here. We're talking about two additional trips per minute. You know, as it go down to one point seven five trips, I mean, does that sway your decision? Um, and that, like I said, that's up to you, but the 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 what we were trying to do is give you give you a an idea, you know, is it ten trips, is it twenty trips, or is it a thousand, you know, so it to try try to have that that conversation with some real numbers and you can look at the numbers any way you want. But at least these are some numbers you can get an idea of of, you know, what you what you believe may shift and what I believe may shift and what the residents may believe may shift, but it does give you some concrete numbers of what we're talking about, the potential that could shift.
You know, some people's nature, especially during rush hour, when they're trying to get their children to school before the morning bell uh is to speed and get there as quickly as seemingly possible. You know, we recognize maybe if we create a path of least resistance, there there will be some increased traffic. But um I just want to delve as deep as we can, Mark, into your reasoning and and your the 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 variables that you're considering. Um, you're assigning a ninety percent diversion rate from River Road onto Windsor. Um, that that seems like a a large percentage to me, but but nevertheless, um, we've also I I think it's worth considering what other traffic traffic calming devices, if any, um, are in place in the study that you perform currently that abate some of that diversion as well.
Right. I mean, the one thing I would stay away from, I know some people have talked about stop signs uh to minimize speed. Now, the MUTCD specifically says you should not, you shall not use stop signs to slow speed in areas because what you actually get is people, two things will happen. People will ignore them, they'll roll through them if they think they're not justified. And two, people will speed between them between them even faster because they'll feel that the stop sign is slowing them up. So it's been proven that just putting stop signs in doesn't necessarily slow slow traffic up everywhere because you'll get traffic going faster between them. So if you're going to try to look at other traffic calming measures, I wouldn't recommend stop signs.
Does it matter if you're going left or right out of there? Because obviously right now, I mean, I'm sure I know a lot of people do the cut through where they're going through like Riverdale to uh Chestnut to Briar, then make a left on Windsor. Will make a difference in speed if someone's making a right. I mean, I don't know if that's gonna like potentially, you you know, that's gonna somehow make anyone go faster. That's curious to your perspective.
Right. I mean, if you because of the way this is directed, like the northbound left into it is easier, uh, which is the majority of where the let me try to phrase this. So anyone's going north on 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 River Road, making the left in is not, it's not a real difficult move. You're just kind of crossing traffic. The more difficult move would be making the left out, which you wouldn't really do coming out of here in order to avoid that or in order to use this uh this cut through. You're not, the only really people doing that would maybe maybe going to the park or or something like, or you know, to the ball field. So that move that left out, the more difficult move, I don't think is the 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 move that most people are going to make using this cut through.
Yeah, I mean, the point, what I could see though of people leaving GE and if they want to in 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 actually using the cut through to like get through the center of town coming instead of going through the, instead of going through the taking, you know, taking a right and then having to wait for that terrible, you know, line that you sometimes get, having that big intersection between Rosa and um, you know, Rosa and and Balltown, taking a left out of a apartment, coming out of the circle, then going down River Road and then cutting, going to the center of town that way, if this if this is here. Because where it is right now, you have to go past it and then come back around and most people aren't going to do that, but I can certainly see more people doing it, leaving GE and come and 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 um and Capital as well.
Can I can I just jump in for a sec? First of all, I'd like to thank Patrick. He summed up what was on my mind pretty good there. Thank you, Patrick. The um, I read, you know, I read the report over a couple of times of the assessment and that was the one thing, that's a good report. And um, one thing that jumped out at me was the ninety ninety percent diversion. That kind of, you know, you know, the why behind that because obviously that's correlates correlates directly to the number of cars. And I know you say ten percent, okay, knock off a half a car or whatever, but you know, is it really forty percent? Is it, you know, forty five percent? That that makes a big difference in that assessment of how much traffic gets put on Windsor. That's the only thing that, you know, kind of bothered me a little bit. Now, I can speak from experience because I I live over right near Catherine's Woods and I drive that way, I mean, constantly. It wasn't for the COVID nineteen, it'd be several times a day. And I used to work at the R and D Center and at Knowles Atomic, both locations. Um, and I know that just again, for me, I'm one of those people that will drive to that circle, around the circle and go to Town Hall all the time. I do not go through uh Riverdale or uh or Edison, uh, any of those connections to get through. Because frankly, it's just, it's me, it's, you know, even though you may say it knocks off a minute, it's it's a torturous path and it seems like it it doesn't save time. It's, you know, there's no stop signs, there's no traffic you need to avoid if you go straight and you go around the circle. You don't have to worry about slowing down with if there's any uncalming traffic to pull into the Riverdale or to Windsor or any of the side streets. So that's just my preference. So that's only one data point, of course, but it it, you know. So I have a tr- I have trouble with the ninety percent because that's such an important number in this traffic assessment for the residents and for our decision making. It it just seems uh, to me, it seems high, but I, you know, I don't know what the answer is. The other thing is when you talked about, I guess it's about a minute, right, Mark? We knock off if we go through the Kells Farm about a minute. Is that taking, you know, that that's that's how do you come up with that minute? And it's just assuming the linear footage of the road? Is that where you come up with that miles per hour and the length of the road?
Yes, it's average speed, you know, the the linear miles per road and, you know, estimating the the average wait time at some of these intersections. Yes, it's 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 an estimate. It's definitely could be minute and fifteen and, you know, it it's 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 estimate.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. So, you know, so it could also go the other way, you know, uh, it could be a little bit longer depending on, you know, people on the bike path, you know, uh, you know, people, cars in the road. I mean, it, we're talking a small amount of time here, you know, that you gain by going through that, uh, you know, currently through Riverdale. I can't remember what the other road is.
Chestnut. Chestnut Briar.
Yeah, I mean, off a off a River Road, the road that would connect. I know Edison does in Riverdale.
Catherine's Woods.
Look, Catherine's Woods is
There's there's crossing Catherine's Woods is Lynnwood.
Yeah. So anyway, that was my biggest concern because obviously the ninety percent, when I read the traffic assessment, it to me raised my eyebrows. If I was a resident, I'd say, wow, that's a lot of cars. And but, you know, again, you're being very conservative and saying, you know, that's a worst case scenario, I I believe is where you come up with the nine ninety percent. Is that true statement?
Yes, you know, if if we say we went fifty percent, I think you'd you'd still have the same reaction from the residents. Um, and if you went fifty percent, is is five hundred cars still going to change the character of that road potentially? Because a local road by definition is supposed to provide access to more neighborhood residential streets. By opening this up a little bit more, it does become more of a collector road because it's not just providing access to the residences. It is coming through traffic and that gets to the more of a definition of a collector road. So, you know, you know, even if we knocked it in half, is it is the definition of that road still going to be a collector? Probably, um.
Okay, so so Mark.
So, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so Chairman Walsh, if you don't mind here, because this was
No, go ahead.
Point since since Mark brought it up. So let's just talk about a definition of the collector road. So is it the volume of cars that's doing it? Or is it the fact that it actually connects a road like River Road to what other road? That makes it an urban collector?
It it's it's more the 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 direct, more of a direct connection, yes, but it is also, it has something to do with the volume. But it's more with the 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 function of the road of what it's, what 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 is the intent of the road?
So so is the other road that it connects to, so River clearly is one end of the collector, right? So what is the other end of the collector?
It would be like Knott and Van Ant- Van Antwerp.
Okay. But it doesn't, it it does, so those satisfy as being the other end of the collection point. It does not need to extend to Balltown or to Erie Boulevard or to
Right, it's it, well, yes, it is providing that connection to those. I mean, those those roads are county roads are meant to get you to the high school, meant to get you to uh, state state roads. So those are the the, you know, the majority of your residential developments are feeding onto these roads to get to your your more major
Okay, so so is it safe to say that it is an urban collector between River and Van Antwerp? As opposed to say it's an urban connector between River and Erie Boulevard where the casino is? Which of those statements are more
Can you restate that?
Is is when with the cut through, does Windsor become a collector between River and Van Antwerp only? Or does it become a collector between River and Erie Boulevard? In Schenectady?
Well, it probably depends on where, what's the final destination and that is kind of leading into one of my questions, Mark. I know the AM peak is really, that's the big um data point here. I gotta believe that's mostly the the rush to drive children to school. And so the terminus of those trips is um right on Knott Street before the intersection of Balltown Road. You have needed to support that. Do you know, do we know, or did you, does your, does your data collection end at the intersection of Van Antwerp and Knott?
It ends at Van Antwerp and Knott, yes.
Because as we've heard from the residences, right, because the words, sorry, Pat, we can, we, I think we can do this together because we're in the same neighborhood right now. I I think it's really the definition of urban collector. Right? And how far is the extent of that in your study? Right? Because we we've heard residents raise quite a few times this concept that this cut through connects you know, Rivers Casino to River Road. Right? And and so I'm just looking to see what kind of data might be available to to give us what those definitions of urban collector means relative to those distances and those trips. Anyway, Pat, you can
Okay, just to just to ask a question, J- J- Mark, if if it's anonymous cell data, can you measure beyond this immediate area that you've been focused on?
Yes, but it it's, uh, you have to add more data points around, so it the the cost goes up extra exponentially. The the more intersections you add on, you've got to sort of track it. Uh, so yes, we could do that, but it would, it would, the cost would go up to to do that. It's it's not just a catch all. We can just get whatever we want. You have to strategically plot your points to figure out where, what, you know, what you request from this, from this company.
Well, knowing the peak time, where the scene where the peak times fall, you know, I may may be only the only one here, but it would seem to me that we're zeroing in on on the beginning of the school day and the end of the workday. Those are the two peak ti- peak times around eight AM or four PM. Right?
Yeah, well, so I would just, I would mention, I'm not in favor of the thinking that this road or connection to whoever is going to exacerbate an issue of drivers heading to or from the casino, but I don't, I agree with the point that it's the peak hours definitely around the school time. I think the concern would be midday when people are getting away and going to recreate. There's going to be increased traffic um, on Windsor toward the casino and I just don't think that that's going to be measurably significant. And I just want to remind the group that the with a high ninety percent, which I agree with Kevin and everyone that made that point, we're talking about two cars every two, every minute. I mean, percentages are always interesting because they they really can make a, they can draw a picture that's very different than what's real. Because the numbers are what they are, it's going to be from nine point eight to 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 twelve point two, or maybe it's eleven point seven if it's not ninety percent. So I, these numbers are very valuable and I do like you explaining where they come from. The only question I don't think was answered was, is there some variable added to the to these cell, these cell data points to account for those people that don't have a cell phone? Could these numbers be hot, much higher? Because there's not as many numbers, is that kind of factored into the equation?
It's it's factored in. They uh, they look at existing data that they have in the area to make sure that the the data is normalized and and make sure that they're not not too low compared to data points that they have on all these roads.
Yep, got it. Thank you.
I started to ask this before and I guess the question I ask, i- i- is there any way to measure whether the speed that someone has coming through after going through four turns is going to be less than what they have going through two turns and be based upon what direction? I don't know if that is a a measurable item or not. But I do think, you know, I think a lot of people go through Chestnut and Briar now and make that, make the left turn to Windsor. But I do wonder if you have two turns, whether that speed is, it's gonna just by the very nature, it's gonna cause people to drive faster or not. I don't know if that's the case or not. But I just want to kind of flesh it out because I do think that that is part of it as well, is the concern about people kind of using that road more so as a cut through, which is going to make it harder for people to bike on it, run on it and you know, and kids to play and 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 at least in their lawns, obviously they won't be in the road.
Yeah, understood. Um, you can do travel time runs in your car uh through the the development and, you know, down Windsor and and make some assumptions based on what's going to be there uh, to see what those turns are going to do. I mean, almost plot another course through the through the this the through the development that gives you that same amount of distance and turn in the number of turns. Um, just to give you an idea.
Right, but I guess my question is, is does the, does having a less number of turns to get to a road make someone drive faster on that road that we're all focused on? I I don't know the answer to that. I was curious as as to your expertise because I do think that that seems to be one of the concerns is not only the volume, but the rapidity or the speed by which they will drive on that road. Now, we've tried, I think it seems like there's some mitigation by having a turn in the road, so it's not directly like a straight shot. But I don't know whether the less number of turns somehow, from a psychological standpoint, causes people to want to drive faster or not. I don't know the answer to it. But I do think it's a question of whether, that is a critical question I think people have had of, is, you know, the impact on the speed on that road.
I don't know if you can make a, you know, a informed determination of what people are going to do uh, based on the information that we have. Um, I, you know, your guess is as good as mine, I guess, really. You know, will people speed? I I don't know, you know.
I just think no one answers. Yes, the speed from a speeding standpoint, when the eighty fifth percentile is fifty one miles per hour, that leave that data was taken in the forty mile per hour zone. That was where that traffic counter was out, right?
It was just
Yeah, but was it, was within the forty though?
It was in the, within the forty, yeah.
Yeah. Um, if I may, I had a couple, a couple of comments, more comments and questions, I guess. Um, Joel or Mark, you mentioned uh, talking to the county and getting some feedback. And I guess they'd probably be more concerned about the curb cuts along River Road, but have you had a chance to talk to them at all yet?
No, they've seen this, they've seen the study and we're we're trying to set up a meeting with them uh to go over not only the curb cuts, but also the uh, the bike pad crossing.
Okay, thank you. And then the
They're gonna meet with us on Wednesday, Wednesday at eleven.
One thing I think would be valuable, and I know that Joel brought this up before, um forget, you know, not not talking about the connection right now, just River Road itself. Um, where that forty mile per hour, forty mile per hour starts, I guess, in the northerly direction. It seems like they could relocate, push that sign down a bit, so they could start slowing down sooner. Um, that would probably help the crossing and uh, any egress uh, ingress to the new development if it's approved, right? So it seems like the county shouldn't have a hard
So it seems like the county shouldn't have a hard spot with moving that forty mile an hour sign. So it's something I'd like to, at least uh, here at the county has to say about that.
Hey Kevin, this is Joel. Um, you know, I looked for the forty-five mile an hour speed limit sign and that doesn't appear until right before the uh, angled bike crossing right now.
Right, when you're heading south, I guess it would be, right?
South, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking about going north, it's pushing that forty mile an hour sooner, so there's, you're slowing down, assuming you're obeying the traffic sign, right? Uh, I mean, you're doing fifty-one in the forty, you know? So that's, you know, concerning, you know, going that fast. I mean, that was the eighty-fifth percentile, you had some pretty high numbers there along the road, huh, Mark?
Yes, I, I mean, typically your eighty-fifth is about five miles over the limit. This was ten, so that was uh, you know, that was surprising, but it makes sense considering we're right in that transition zone, so.
Right. Alright, so anyway.
We'll definitely bring it up with them, Kevin.
Yeah, but I'd like to hear what they have to say about that. That would help, you know, again, with the development, if it goes forward, just for people pulling in out of driveways or in and out of that Kelts Farm Loop or whatever you're gonna call it, okay? So, so since we're, since we're on this, okay, I'm sorry Kevin, I thought you were No, go ahead, Genghis. No, I was just gonna say, s- since we're on this one, Joel, you had mentioned, so again on the River Road, north side, um, side of the, the Loop Road. So with the regressing that's going to be done due to the site distance, will you be putting in that Little Boulevard or no? The median or no?
Uh, it's up to the planning board, I could go either way on it. Um, it's probably not really required. But if I look at it, Genghis, I mean, uh, if I'm taking a turn there, that really is gonna slow my, if I'm taking a left turn to go up Windsor, that median is gonna slow me down, and I was thinking that I would add them on both uh, both connections.
By, you mean the, by, you mean both of, both ends of your Loop Road?
Yeah. I, I've, Mark, maybe Mark can comment on that, but I know for a fact that you know, if I was turning with my pickup truck, you know, a lot of people do a California turn, a nice wide turn, you know what I mean? But if you put that uh, median there, you really have to take a sharper turn. Gotta slow you down.
Yeah, but, I mean, with, so from a planning board perspective, we find that acceptable, but do you find it acceptable from a development perspective?
Yeah, sure. I have no problem with it. And I mean, you know, like, you, you could see we added the the sharp left-hand turn with a stop sign now too, so.
Yep, that was
You know, my feeling is, is that the people coming over Chestnut and Briar Ridge, they get to that intersection, then they accelerate up Windsor, okay? And it's now people's, people make this cut through, they, they start accelerating at the same point, so really this subdivision, this, this cut through doesn't have anything to do, in my opinion, with the speed on existing speed on Windsor, or how fast people are gonna drive up Windsor.
I totally agree.
I mean, they're two separate issues.
So I I just have to state, and Laura would jump in sooner or later, that Laura sent this over to the CDT C for their, you know, take a look at it. Also, and provide some help with us regarding this traffic assessment. So we'll get some additional feedback from, hopefully from the CDT C, right, and uh, the county, uh, along with our own uh, take, look, see. Who's the, Laura, who's the engineer, uh, engineering firm that's assigned to doing a peer review for this subdivision, for this average density development?
Uh, we do not have one assigned yet, but I did want to jump in. We do, we will need to get a TDE shortly and put him on a quick review. And then, yeah, the CDT C just offered to look at it because we were interested in sort of the unusual data collection, or at least that we've ever seen for a traffic study, because it's during the COVID nineteen crisis and you can't just do normal, you know, you can just do normal strips out on the road, and so for that reason, the CDT C was willing to look at it for us, just to see, you know, if there are any anomalies or just to give us any guidance on the way that the data was collected, but we would still need to hire a TDE to formally review it. Um, I know typically we wouldn't have such an in-depth conversation without a TDE review, but because it's such a an important issue, obviously to a lot of people, I felt it was in the best interest to get that traffic study out there so we could start the conversation. And we can follow up with, um, you know, our own engineering review and double checking things that come up, questions that have come up. And then, you know, have a, have a follow-up, um, conversation about the traffic.
Yeah.
So can we get the TV right away?
Yes.
So, so on that note, Mark, Mark is still on, right, Timmer?
Yep.
Can you make a comment here in the meeting about the, the relevance of your data given the, the, you know, the, the COVID nineteen shutdown?
Yeah, uh, like I said, the uh, the assessment was done. The historical data that we pulled from this company called Streetlight was uh, from October two thousand nineteen. So that was prior to any restrictions be- before the, the virus even came to the US, so the data is, is, you know, typical conditions, average weekday conditions uh, in that area.
Thank you.
Mark, I've got a couple of questions on the uh, table four for the Windsor Drive connection. I think Mr. Plom actually touched base on this a little bit. The ninety percent diversion rate that you used, I think it would be helpful if we added a couple of columns at twenty-five percent and fifty percent. Um, and then pull the parallels of the representation of the percentage increases so that we could see what a, maybe a smaller fraction of that would look like compared to the ninety percent.
Yeah, we could do like a threshold assessment, yeah.
Right, I think that would just be helpful, just to see the full, the full scope from, you know, one quarter to almost, almost full commitment. And then, the other, the other thing in there that a couple residents touched on was there's three thousand seven hundred thirty-five daily trips that are on Windsor Drive for a local road. Would that be considered high volume for a local road? And I am gonna kind of parcel this into a two-part question. If that was considered high volume, at what point or what volume number would the local road turn into a capacity upgrade? Or classification?
Well, typically, the capacity, CDT C, just what you guys are talking about, says that a local road capacity is about six hundred twenty-five, if it, if it's a, considered a local road, it has six hundred twenty-five vehicles per direction is the threshold you should be at for a local road. And so we're, if we moved that, you know, ninety percent of traffic, I think we'd, we'd be close to six hundred or maybe five ninety, I think it was. So we'd be close to the threshold of a local road based on CDT C's uh, guidelines for a local road.
Twenty-five trips per hour or peak trips, what's the six hundred twenty-five?
Six hundred twenty-five trips in an hour per direction.
And it's still, at least the data projection, even with the ninety percent, is still below that six hundred, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
If I might add a point or two, um, point of connectivity is not to speed traffic through the town. What is that there's dispersion of traffic, that emergency responders be able to get through, that they have alternatives, different ways of getting where they need to. Uh, is to provide alternatives in case there is a major problem with a usual route that can divert traffic safely. So it's not all about speeding people through. And following up with what both Patrick and Kevin said, some of us are not gonna go through neighborhoods because we don't want to deal with children playing by the street or or shit in the street. We don't want to deal with the hairy parents backing out of the driveways in a boarding rush. We find it more peaceful to stay on the highways. So I think the ninety percent is higher than it will actually be.
Yeah, like I said, I could provide a, or we could provide a threshold assessment to show, you know, what, what levels. And in terms of access, I mean, if you wanted to keep you know, access for emergency vehicles, you could, you know, construct like a paper street with bollards or, you know, some sort of crash gate, that in the event that there was an, an incident, you could open that up. Um, so that, that's another way to, to deal with emergency type vehicles.
So, so I'm glad Mr. Diarpino requested to see that threshold study, but Mark, I'm gonna go back into a point that we discussed earlier. And the only reason I'm going back to it is because it was a significant factor in all of the residences. Um, feedback and input. This concept of urban collector again. Is there a threshold then where the road ceases to be an urban, be considered an urban collector? And remains as a local, uh, whatever the category was before then, I, I
Uh, I'm sure, I, there is, and I saw it, I, I don't remember it off the top of my head, I would have to get back to you on what that, that threshold number is.
Be- because look, I, I mean, and, you know, maybe we'll move off the traffic topic soon, maybe not, but I just, you know, there are things I think we're gonna discuss on this, right? But there's a couple of key things here. By definition, if the character of the road changes to become another classification, and I think David, this is where you were getting at, right? In terms of the local road versus what's not, but by the usage of that terminology, urban collector, then we're faced with a potential change in the character of the neighborhood. Right? And so I think we need to assess that one carefully.
Yes, I'm in, I'm in complete agreement with Mr. Khan's comment, and Mark, that's exactly where I was trying to head with this, is that if this connection over to River Road changes the classification significantly, that does have an impact on the neighborhood. So I think that we gotta vet that data out pretty thoroughly in order for the board to thoroughly understand that.
Uh, I'll look for a volume threshold. Um, the, the statement was more based on the types of users versus the discussion of it being, you know, providing access to neighborhoods versus through traffic. So that, that was more where that statement came from, but I will do a, a, some research to figure, I, I know I looked at it, I just, I didn't have it in the report. But I'll give you a threshold of local versus collector roads, if I can find it. Volume-wise.
That's, that's great, thanks, thanks, Mark. Um, Mike, we covered all the things, my notes I had regarding the current state of the traffic assessment. Obviously, we just asked for some more data. Um, I agree with Mr. Diarpino. Um, you know, just expanding that table, which is pretty straightforward, just to look at, uh, you know, whatever, twenty-five, fifty, and ninety percent, or, you know, twenty percent increments or something like that, just so we can have an idea uh, how much the change in diversion impacts the traffic on Windsor, that'd be important. Um, you know, also, you know, as discussed with Laura and all you guys, you know, we have several sources of feedback that we're still gonna obtain. This is the first time we, we some of us have seen the traffic assessment was this weekend. Um, you know, we'll get county feedback, CDT C, and then from our town designated engineer along with the questions that we asked tonight, so we'll have another round of information uh, to, um, um, hopefully hone in on this traffic assessment, okay? Is there any other questions on the assessment while we have Mark and, uh, we can, we can talk some more about, um, uh, the development itself or the average density development itself? Are there any other questions on traffic assessment at this point in time?
Yes, Kevin, this is Joel. Can you add, uh, the fire chief's, uh, opinion?
Sure. We have the fire chief's opinion, I think we already had it, right, from Laura?
Yes, I have, um, forwarded that email, the fire piece thought that the connection would be beneficial for emergency services. Um, and I know that there has been questions in the, um, public comment as to as to why emergency vehicle would take that route or what, you know, an additional minute would be saved, but, um, I think Leslie kind of touched on this, that it's not always um, sometimes the roads are closed, so like when the planning board is trying to plan a development, like you can't have a road more than five hundred feet long where you don't have an alternative connection. So there's more than a time benefit to having an emergency connection to this, um. You know, like, it may be that there's a big storm and a tree falls down across Van Antwerp or across Windsor in one section, and so it becomes very difficult to get to where a emergency vehicle needs to go during a, you know, time of crisis, and so to have the multiple access points is very beneficial for emergency response. I can put his email in there, I think he does have some stuff, I can send that out to people. Um, but, um, Kevin, and I don't want to interrupt really good discussion, but I did get an email from a resident that I missed reading someone's comment into the record, and I I know it's, um, it's a long meeting, but I don't want to leave anybody out. If I would like to read it into the record so that it's there and they can feel heard, if that's okay?
No, it's great, it's regarding River Road, uh, this development, sure.
It's regarding the traffic, okay, so I'm just gonna read it really quick. It's from Victoria Varga Hootner. And she writes, "First, we want to start by thinking whoever, whomever had a speed limit sign placed on Windsor Drive with associated radar that tells people their speed as they pass by. Living at four zero four one Windsor Drive, we actively witness eastbound traffic slowing down. It has helped to get people to at least temporarily hit the brakes and has also validated our concern that people continually speed down our road. Let's hope the effects of this sign linger and don't just get ignored over time. We are writing to you today once again in protest of the cut through between Windsor Drive and River Road. We hear from the recent traffic study that this is an undesirable connection will add significant volume of traffic to our community, close to a thousand cars per day are estimated. This will be a significant safety risk to our families and neighborhoods and to the community at large who uses this road for walking and biking. Crossing the road will become more difficult and dangerous. This volume increase will change the classification of our road from local urban street to collector road. Why do we want to bring this traffic through a residential community? Even Creighton Manning mentions twice that the impact is significant and does not have much of an upside. All of this would only shave one minute and ten seconds of driving time off of people's current commutes to the center of town. This is not worth it. If you really feel the need to increase connectivity down Windsor Drive, do so with a bike multi-use path as mentioned in the most recent comprehensive plan, not a road. Even so, this traffic study reminds us that crossing River Road with excessive speeding and visibility issues is risky. While we appreciate you feel an obligation to plan for the future centuries of Niskiuna, as our planning board, your responsibility is first and foremost to protect the current residents who live here in Niskiuna. Encouraging this road connection will do just the opposite. It will jeopardize the well-being of both the current residents and future residents. If the past few months have taught us anything, it is that the future will never be certain. That being said, the one thing we are certain of is that if one person gets hurt on our street because of increased traffic due to road connection, it will very clearly be your fault since the only people who want this connection are you. Sincerely, Christopher and Victoria Hootner of four zero four one Windsor Drive." So, thank you for letting me read that one, I'm sorry that I missed it, and I appreciate that people were looking at. Yeah, um, and then I just wanted to say, um, while we're talking about traffic, it's kind of difficult for us to get a handle on this, and I just wanted to kind of frame the conversation for the public, because I know that there's a lot of feeling out there that the planning board isn't listening and that we're pursuing this um, like, just blindly, without listening to the public comments that we're receiving, and I just wanted to frame it, um, that it has to be thoroughly vetted, because it is an important connection that the town has discussed before, and that possibility of it, it has to be thoroughly vetted, it's not that we're not listening. Um, and I think that I heard from planning board people, you know, these numbers are really important, it's the first time we've seen them, like, we have to check them and understand where they're coming from. And we have these different places and sources that we're looking at, because it's an unusual situation, and it is a difficult type of uh, traffic assessment to make. Um, we don't just want to blindly make this connection without a traffic assessment, but it isn't a typical traffic assessment, it isn't like you're, like, it hopefully has come out during this con- this conversation. There's a couple of times where the engineer said, "Your guess is as good as mine," because, you know, there's things that you can't really quantify with numbers and figure out how this is gonna work. Um, but I, I mean, what I think we really want to do is understand the worst impact to the neighbors with the understanding that, you know, this connection does benefit in connect connectivity to, to the park, connectivity to neighborhoods, connectivity within the town is a complete street subjective. Knowing that there are ways that you can, you know, pull back and change the subdivision, uh, you know, but you want to really understand where the worst-case scenario is coming from, and then decide from that point on what is the right thing to do to move forward as best we can, and then do that recommendation to the town board. But I don't want to get our meeting with the residents lost. Um, we had originally scheduled the meeting with the residents, it didn't go out to the residents, we had originally scheduled it, like, Genghis jumped in here. I think it was the end of March, right when, um, town hall was shutting down, I think it was like March thirty-first. Yeah, we were gonna schedule it. Um, and I think that, you know, we wanted to get the traffic study, we just got it, we still need to like to really figure out where the data is, but I think what we, what we're, what we're thinking and jumping here To really figure out where the data is, but I think what we, what we're, what we're thinking, and jumping here if I'm wrong. Is that we'll take a look at this data, wrap our brains around it. Get the TD comments, see if CDTc has anything to say about it, you know, go back and forth with the developer a little. And then meet with the residents when we have a better handle on the data and can really go back and forth with good conversation with them, so that we feel comfortable where the numbers are coming from. And then we can have that community conversation, like, is two extra cars a minute? You know, gonna be life-changing? Or is it something that we can deal with because of the benefits of the connection? Is, is a thousand extra cars a day? Really significant? Are we changing the classification from urban? I mean, those were just all the things I heard, so that's the conversation we'd have with the resident. And you guys, you know, you can just let me know, but I'm thinking that. That it's likely gonna have to be done electronically, but I think that I can reach out and really. Have a lot of emails, like really work with people so that they can be comfortable speaking electronically. That we could aim, you know, maybe towards the end of the month, so that we can really delve into this conversation and potentially, you know. Does that make sense? And jump in, cuz I'm just, it's late.
So Laura, I, I, I'm glad you said what you said, and I strongly recommend it, and look, David and, and Patrick. You know, I think you're in agreement with this, and, and I, I'm just gonna say it because it's forward on my mind from the beginning. Up until today, right? I, I think having a two-way conversation with the community is important in this matter. Just like it was important, I think, for other issues that we've dealt with before, so we have a precedent. Recommending it. Obviously, the shutdown has made it difficult and the communications in doing it, but. You know, I, I think, I think, and I hope that most of the people in the community can, you know, participate actively and freely in a. Open two-way discussion. Even if it's electronic, because, you know, Laura's raised the key point, right? The community has questions about why are we even going through this process, right? There are some things that are just so obvious. But to Laura's point, that's, that's part of our legal responsibility, right, is to vet through this. And the other thing that we work with is with definitions, right? Both definitions and expectations that. You know, the community should have had, or the neighborhood should have had, et cetera, and I think, I got some comments to make and add a little bit down the road here. So. You know, as, as cumbersome as it might be in an electronic world, I think we still need to have that kind of an event. Because. You know, at the end of the day, we do have responsibility. To Niskiuna and to the residents of Niskiuna, including this neighborhood. And also what the, what the plan for Niskiuna connectivity looks like.
Okay. David or Patrick, are we all set on traffic assessment for tonight?
I think so.
But the only other, the only other thing I think that Joel might wanna take a look at is. If the connection for the, for the connection road is made. How much traffic coming up Briarwood in that neighborhood would be diverted from going up Windsor Drive? To get to River Road, because currently now, the only way to get out of there is to go. Up Windsor to Van Antwerp and around, or back down through the neighborhoods, so anyone that lives on that. The north or the east end of that neighborhood. Would now have the option of going to the connection at Windsor, at Windsor Drive and taking a right. That might affect the traffic numbers of. The current amount of, you know, the three thousand, thirty-seven hundred daily trips that are solely having to use Windsor Drive. Just something that Mark might wanna look into.
If we have a community meeting, I think there's gotta be sort of a, a plain English description of some of the. Goals that I think people are trying to. Achieve here, because I think it's gonna get lost in a lot of people in the public, and they're not gonna, they're not gonna, they're not gonna appreciate it. And it's gonna end up being, it could end up being a very contentious type discussion. So I think the, you know, the, the studies are good, and you have to have the intellectual. Information behind it, but whatever it is, gotta be dumbed down so the public can understand. If in fact, it's not that many trips, as it seems to be what the point people are saying here, then we've gotta figure out a way in which to explain that very kind of like down-to-earth way.
I, I agree, and I was just thinking that way, is, is, would it be, would it be unprecedented for us to? Take the same technology we use to estimate. Travelers by way of cellphone and take a couple other key roads in Niskiuna and just do it. And again, I, I harped back to where I live, and I'm most familiar with it, but you take a road like Whammer. That didn't exist connecting Rao Road to Ruffner. And just say, how many people take that Whammer Road? Each day to get from that side of the neighborhood to the other side of the neighborhood? And then what's the total traffic on Rao Road? And is it really that different than nine hundred trips? And is Whammer actually carry eight hundred of those nine hundred cars? Like, could we show some parallels of other neighborhood streets carrying some more traffic? So that it maybe makes it easier to consume to those point. Just a suggestion, I wouldn't wanna do anything exceptional, but that may be a place to go to, to make, to draw. To make people understand the impact.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we have a somewhat of a unique circumstance here too, because we have a developer who has indicated that he is not a fan. Of the cut through, and that this is literally a planning board suggestion. I mean, not literal, I mean, they, the developer at our request has come up with it, but it is a suggestion that's come to the planning board, so. That type of public meeting could get very contentious. And I think that if you're gonna have that, you've gotta have it, you know, kinda really. Have some really, really good talking points, because I think some of the stuff is gonna get lost on the public.
Well, I think, look, the important thing there, Mo, and for the planning board, is that we, you know, the planning board. That views the. Importance of the cut through. We need to be able to make the case. And I think we need to be able to make the case. In the presence of being able to hear retort from the community. Not, not doing it one meeting to the next, under a well-structured privilege of the floor or. Or a public hearing session, right? I, I, I think, I think, I, I, I think we. We take that responsibility, right? We have that responsibility.
I, I think the challenge, though, is that you're gonna have things, what about the one speeder? What about, you know, talking about, like, what if my kid happens to be, like?
But so, so my, so my view on that is that we go back to some of the things we brought up here earlier, right? Because we operate within a set of definitions, and I know this is probably where you're getting at with. Having to put it in a, in a plain speak language, which I think we can, but at the end of the day. The nature of Windsor Drive as it exists today and its definition as a X-type of road. Does that change in the worst case ninety percent, the seventy-five, right? And we just go through that, right? So it becomes an urban collector when? Right?
Right, and those are great questions, I think those are really, I think we're all sort of operating from a, hey, this is what we think could happen. But ultimately, it's on the data, and we have to turn to the experts for the data. And if the experts are telling us that it's not really gonna add that much, then obviously that's a pretty significant.
Right, but part of it is then to, part of two-way dialogue with the community is the interpretation of the data, right? The difference between a ninety percent, one thousand more cars per day. Versus that ninety percent is actually two more cars per minute. Right? Which is something that we couldn't bring up in the current dialogue. With the, with the community, right? Unless you have that dialogue.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think, and, and the, and Jengus has been very sensitive to this, and, you know, some of it was in the comments from the public that we heard. That right now is a very stressful and sensitive time for people as well. So they're worrying about everything going on with the world, and then they're feeling overwhelmed by, you know, potential changes that they're hearing. From at the planning board, so I think it's gonna be really important. Do everything in our power to make it a not contentious meeting, and I think that. For that reason, and actually for any reason. It is really important for the planning board to explain. Why. It, you know, why we would pursue it as a connection, what our thought processes are, what we're looking at, and what we're balancing. So I'm not sure, you know, we're talking about ninety percent diversion. You know, like, and I said this in a couple meetings before, like, you know, the expectation is that we're adding a hundred cars to Windsor Drive, and it carries. You know, I don't know, however many cars it carries a day, like. Okay, that's not really a big deal, if it's adding a thousand cars, well, what does that mean? If it's changing the classification? Well, okay, now we're balancing, because we didn't have those numbers before. We need to understand them, and if that really is the case, we need to, you know, think about it, think about what the benefits are for the connection. Present that, and then listen, and then it would not be contentious, I think it would just be like. Okay, you guys feel that, you know, this is too many cars, we are looking at this threshold, like, where's, where's our middle ground, like? We're doing the most that we can for it not to be stressful for people.
I, I, I understand, it just sometimes. People, it, it will end up, someone will bring up worst-case scenarios. And worst-case scenarios involving children are a very difficult thing to talk about in sort of a, but the logic, but the report says this.
So that's okay, cuz we need to listen to all those things. I mean, the ninety percent diversion is a worst-case scenario, like, hopefully theoretically, it wouldn't be that much. But, you know, there, there's a good, you know, reason to look at.
I mean, case in point, this is the benefit of discussion, is David's last suggestion, right? There are some traffic scenarios that actually offloads Windsor Drive. Right? Because, because there, there are people that actually. Come up from those streets, Briar Ridge, et cetera. And the only, their only goal is to get out the River Road, but they end up going on Windsor Drive to do that.
But we'd have to, so, that was, that was, by the way, I was trying to make that point earlier, but it still touches Windsor Road, and that was kinda. From a macro perspective, the traffic still touches Windsor.
I mean, it touches it so people can go across the street if this configuration goes forward.
That's right, but if we, that, I think that's the most point, is how do we draw a picture that's super easy to consume? So that it's not so contentious. You know, and I don't know if illustrations, animation, you know, I don't know, but I don't know if words are gonna make it less contagious.
Guys, I don't think it needs to be, I don't think it needs to be. Made simpler, I feel like we're very blessed in our community, and if somebody, if somebody doesn't feel this way, that's fine. But I think that, you know, you generally speaking, have a pretty good understanding of what's going on. I think really just a listening and figuring out where we're gonna land as a community, like what they need, what we're looking at. And, yeah, I don't think that we need to dumb it down, I think we need to have good reasons for what we're thinking. And then listen to where they're coming from, and then decide what we think is the best thing to recommend to the town board.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we can have a, I, I, I mean, look, you can see it from the nature of the letters that have been written. I know we have more discussion to have, so I'll, I'll pause here for a while after this. But I think we could actually have an intelligent, mature discussion, knowing well that. You know, that, that everyone has a different, is a, is a stakeholder in a different way in this, and. The people that'll feel the immediate impact of this is obviously the neighbors, right? Part of this thing too is to have the neighbor also understand the process. Right? That at the end of the day, you know, whatever recommendation the planning board makes based on the data and the planning and zoning. Rules, right? It is still a recommendation to the town board who will equally have a decision to have to make here too. Right? I, I think that's something you and I talked about, Laura, is to how many people really understand what the process is. Right? I've seen more, more community members not have insight into that. More than just being able to know how much it'll impact them in their neighborhood.
Yeah, and that's like the starting point for understanding, you know, the connection, and then maybe talking about alternatives. Or finding something that can potentially work for a variety of people, it's the starting point, right?
Yep.
Okay, I think we need to move along, I think we're okay with traffic, Mark, your report's easy to understand, so thank you. Let's, what other comments do we have regarding the site plan for twenty-five thirty-eight River Road? I know that you made the changes, Joel, that were requested. I think the plan looks pretty good personally. I don't know, David, Patrick, how about you guys?
Well, two things that I think would be nice to see in the plan, if, if Joel's in agreement. An area that's. That's deep, deep restricted to allow for. Line of sight around the bend, heading north on River. As well as some. The suggested lighting from Creighton Manning at the pedestrian crosswalk into Blatnik Park.
Yeah, I'm okay with it, yeah, we gotta have the deed restriction. But the lighting, what time does Blatnik Park close, Laura?
I think all our parks are down to dusk.
That's right, so I really didn't see the need for the lighting, you know, that's, that was my question with Mark. And, you know, it's like. I don't see people crossing with bikes at night.
Are there no Little League games under the lights? Or, or Babe Ruth baseball games under the lights? How about the tennis courts? I thought they were lit.
There are baseball games that are, they do have lighting on the Babe Ruth Field, I think.
And at the tennis court, I believe, cuz you have to pay extra to use it.
Aren't the tennis courts gone now? I mean, I thought they converted them to a lacrosse facility with no light.
No.
The tennis courts are still there.
Oh, they are, okay.
Alright, so.
Yeah, we could add light.
So we have a question on lighting, one thing is, when, when you approach the, the crosswalk there, we're hoping for a push button that'll. You know, signify then that somebody's ready to cross, right? It's not gonna be continuously flashing. I don't know if that provides any lighting itself.
Yeah, our, our intention was to. Make the people dismount, you know, and push the button, you know, cuz if somebody just rode up to it, they might go right straight across the street.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, so we'll do the deed restriction, lighting on the crosswalk. Okay.
And Joel, like, just, just as a point of clarification, cuz I know that some, there was some concern about. Like, adding a crosswalk there to, to cross the Blatnik Park, but there actually is one there right now, I mean, there are. There is so many people, there's so much demand, and more so now, I think even. To be able to walk and bike to that park, so there is an existing crosswalk, and it's not perpendicular to the road. And it, that crosswalk, I think, is more on a curve than the one that's proposed, so you wouldn't be like leaving the existing crosswalk. And Joel, you talked about this before, but for anybody who's still listening that doesn't, that hasn't seen that, is that you'd be moving the existing crosswalk and making it safer.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm glad you brought that up, because that was the whole traffic study, is that we put the. The site, we improved the sight line, we center it, okay, it's, it's further away from the forty-five mile an hour speed zone.
Yeah.
And maybe we'll talk to the county about Kevin's suggestion to. Lower the, or. Forty mile an hour on, yeah, on going north, yeah, I agree with that.
But I mean, there's such a demand for the crossing, like, we couldn't remove it, but we can move it and make it safer and help it to serve more neighborhoods.
Yep.
It's definitely safer now.
How about you, David, or anybody else? Any other comments for the applicant on the site plan?
I thought overall, the, most of the changes he made were really, really good. I, I did like the bike path looping along the south side of the. Of the original Kelts Farm Road. However, I see the logic of where it connects now, and only making that one crossing. Where would be little, little to no traffic, so. Made, made good sense.
Yeah, that was a smart move.
Yeah.
So Mark, Mark and team, that was.
Yeah, that was well, that was well thought out, we thought all the same things, David, but.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I, I think the only other thing that was, some comments from the neighbors, and I know that there's not a lot of. Large wooded areas on, on the lot, but there are some on the southern perimeter. If there was a way to maybe demarcate that line on there, just to, just to see it, if you have that information. Or if it shows up at some point, I know that you've made a lot of efforts here to obviously. Stay away from all the wetlands. And then not to touch that. Basically, that southern southwest corner. If there was a way to show where any of those mature trees are on the south end of that lot, that might be helpful.
So you're talking the south, the whole big triangular buffer, the southwest corner?
Yeah, there's, I, I drove by the site the other day, there's not a lot of trees left on it, but there will be some on the southern, southern half of it, correct?
Yeah, what, again, remember what we're gonna do is, we're gonna take. We're gonna do a clearing line, so we're gonna go about twenty-five foot behind the houses. And, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna survey that, and then we're gonna clear to that point, then everything behind that, you know. Stays, I mean, the, the homeowner eventually could clear to the back of their lot, but, you know, we're gonna clear twenty-five feet from the house.
Okay. Anything else?
But David, you're saying that that area is sparse right now, or there's actually?
There, well, and Joel could probably talk a little bit more to this, but on the, on the south end of the lot, there are still some trees. That are there, and as you work your way back up towards angling yourself up towards Briar Ridge. That are there, and as you work your way back up towards angling yourself up towards Briar Ridge. Um, where you have the collection of the three, uh, townhomes.
Yep.
There are, there are some woods back in there, but the rest of the lot is predominantly clear cut.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, Angel, you're gonna have to do it for your stormwater plan anyway, like, why don't you just show the limits of clearing on the plan? So that you can see where, you know, the homes are going into the existing forest and where the remainder of the forest is staying.
Yeah, we could do that. I just thought on a preliminary that we wouldn't get that far, but, because. You, you know, with the final design, that's gonna be a separate page in the drawing, you know, the, the clear, the clearing drawing, you know, so. I mean, we could add it to this, yeah, we can add it, but it's kind of like, we're doing a lot of overlays now, but we'll add it.
The, the, the one thing, Joel, is it comes up on almost any development, even if it's just one, one lot, that people want to know, especially the neighbors, what's staying. And on, you know, especially on this side of town, having a lot of trees as buffers on larger lots are something that's. A characteristic of those neighborhoods, and they like to see that. So even if it was just a, a pink dotted line that was a line of demarcation. That arcs around the back, that's ba- that's basically all we're looking for.
Hey David, if you're bored someday, can we, uh, a nice day, can you and I walk it?
Yeah, definitely, we should this week, so.
Alright, let's do that.
Um, what I'll do is I'll, uh, I'll email some dates, uh, between Patrick, uh, Clark and Laura and I. And we'll try to put something up together. I think it's gonna be nicer towards the end of this week, so maybe Thursday or Friday.
Okay, cool. Laura, we're gonna do the same thing with the, uh, the C D C, right? Or this.
Uh.
Or C, C A C, rather.
Oh, the C A C, yes, they wanted to do a site walkthrough too, yep, mm-hmm, yes, maybe, maybe we, I mean. Yeah, we had, I mean, you just have to be careful of a quorum, but it would be nice if.
That's why we, we gotta do it separate. We don't wanna have a big path going through the woods.
Yeah.
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 I was gonna say, just include me on distribution if I can make it, and we don't have a quorum, I, I'll try to attend also. I appreciate.
Perfect.
Okay.
Hey Laura, can we, uh, can we, uh, cement the path going forward, kind of, with this, uh, public discussion and?
Yeah, I mean, I put approximate timeline out there, but I do think it's good for everybody. I mean, it, you know, everything. Everything is a little bit in a state of flux. Alexis has a favorite thing she has to say right now, but I forgot what it is, it's getting really late. But, um, I mean, I think that the idea is, we got the traffic study on Friday, so, I mean, we can't really obviously make any. Informed decisions on it now, but we'll get the T D E, we'll have the C D T C look at it, we'll give it a week or two to go back and forth with you and the engineers. And then I would think that hopefully we could schedule a virtual meeting with the residents towards the end of May. And then we could have a discussion on the traffic study on our June, on everything. On the June eighth meeting, you know, as, um, a result of the meeting with the residents and, and any of the engineering. Points that we have looked at and made, so that we could have, I mean, I would be shooting for a formal recommendation by the end of June. And at the same time, because the town board schedule is so, um. It's ju- it just takes a long time to move stuff through the town board. Um, they would call for their public hearing at the end of. They would have the resolution on to call for their public hearing at the end of June, so the planning board can make their recommendation, and they can hold their public hearing in July.
Okay. I think that's all predicated on you getting the T D E in the next, uh, probably week then, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, that's a really critical step. It's always important. Um, and the idea would be, I get that estimate, and then, you know, you okay it, and then we get on working on it. They've been really, um. They've been really understanding of timelines recently, um, and I don't, I don't foresee them not being able to get something out to us quickly.
That's great.
Um, so I'm trying really hard not to rush it and make sure that we're getting all of the data looked at and the proper public comment, but also trying to be sensitive. You know, to a reasonable timeline, so I think that that should work. Um, if it doesn't, I'll let everybody know as early as possible, but I think that's the timeline that I also laid out for the residents, so, and the town board. So I think everybody's on board with that. We just gotta get the pieces together and, um, get meeting and thinking and talking and communicating and. And sharing kindness, because I know that it's super stressful and we don't always agree with everything that everybody's saying. Um, but I think everybody's really trying hard, and so we can be good listeners and hopefully we can, you know, also have people listen to us and. Come out in a better place.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, so, so I, guys, team, I'm gonna apologize for doing this, and I know it's late, and, but we're not meeting again until June eighth. There is one other issue on this that I'd like to at least, you know, highlight from what the public brought up. And, so can I get into that, or? So, so, so it has to do with the terminology in the comprehensive plan.
Mm-hmm.
And where I'm coming from personally here, and I mean, you know, so. I always ask myself the question as a planning board member, what expectation did the residents have? Now, granted, there was a stub road that was sitting there throughout all the development, and some residents even talked about asking the town, asking the planner, et cetera, et cetera. So the topic I'm raising here is, you know, and on, on that page thirty-nine, there was reference a few times of the comprehensive plan. The text of the comprehensive plan does set the ex, and I don't know if everyone's looked at it, but it, it sets the expectation that Kelts Farm is never gonna be developed. Which was actually, I think, a, a fairly inaccurate thing to say in a comprehensive plan, but it is what it is. Um, it was making a prediction about the future that obviously we're in a different place now. But it, it does speak about the multi-use path. Not necessarily a road, but the road got precluded by a statement that it made about that this place is never gonna get developed. So how are we, you know, I just want us to discuss this a little bit, because to some extent, that does set a key expectation for the residents. And also a basis for us to do what it is that we wanna do here with a connection.
I have a good question for you. How many of those residents do you think actually read that before they bought their homes?
It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
What it does, you're talking about expectation.
It, it doesn't matter. We put it, we put it into writing, right? So it's a.
I, I'll go, I'll go a step further, you know, by us removing the double yellow line, did, did we? Did, did we send a message we weren't intending to send?
So I think that those are all really important things that we would wanna think about prior to our meeting with the residents, because, um. You know, if we're saying it's been in the comprehensive plan forever, and it's very clear, but the language in the comprehensive plan isn't as supportive as. You know, we had originally thought or intended, um, it's, it's something, we just have to.
I, I mean, tech- technically speaking, the issue with the comprehensive plan statement is when it says that Kelts Farm is never gonna be, is. How does it say? I'm sorry, let me, let me. The presence of the wetlands has made further land development in this area non-economical, and the road extension is unlikely to be built.
So it doesn't say you wouldn't want it, it's saying that it's precluded by the fact that the Kelts Farm is pretty difficult to develop.
Yeah.
But it's hard to judge, um, it's, so it's hard to judge intent from that statement, but your concern is what would be the presentation from anybody who's going to read it. On expectation of development, yeah.
And granted, we have a, we have a point to clarify here, right? If we, if we, you, you know, i- it's clear to me, knowing the rest of the comprehensive plan, that. Connectivity, connection, that's all clear. There is a stub road at the end, there's a physical stub road at the end of Windsor Drive, so that's clear, right? But since it was raised enough times, right? Um, I think we need to, we need to address it, we need to, we need to have a, at least a position statement on what's written in the comprehensive plan. Right? And if we're gonna interpret it a certain way, then we need to actually, you know, be able to articulate the case for that interpretation.
And Genghis, the support, the support that, uh, a very important, uh, talking point is that. We are not touching any of the wetlands. You know, and some people had mentioned like a cul-de-sac coming down from river, which was my original concept, or my original concept was the loop.
From Windsor.
Yeah, this, the loop off a river right now, it's like a precise dissection of the wetland, it, wetlands, I mean. Okay, so, you know, back in nineteen ninety-five, when Ed Riley was trying to shoot it through, and it was all wet. You know, well, they should have done their homework. They should have delineated the wetlands with the Army Corps of Engineers like, like we did, okay? And, and then come up with this nice plan, and, you know, then have the planning board input that said that, well. If we put this double ninety in, we can miss the wetlands, and that was like, that was a revelation, so.
Yeah.
You know, we've done our homework.
So, it took a lot of minds and revisions to get there. It took us a while. I mean, your original plan was.
I think it was ma- it was, it was mainly me, uh, calming down and, and seeing the light, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, I, I mean, what does the rest of the planning board think? I mean, I think we do have an obligation to address the.
No, I, I think we need to have the, the talking points and make sure we're all, um, on the same page, and make sure we all read the comp plan again. I know that Mr. Diopino was the chairman of last comp plan, I won't put him on the spot tonight. I was the chairman of the previous comp plan. Uh, for that one, and, you know, um, you know, back in those days, it was always a plan to, to connect. Uh, as evident by the stub road that's there. Speak for Laura, but I think, you know, when this property went up for sale, anybody that came into town hall just to talk about it, you know, the possibility of, uh. I think Laura kind of forewarned them that, hey, there's a stub road there, and we'll be looking to evaluate the connection. Um, you know, evaluate, you know, I think is the key word, and that's what we're doing right now. Is that correct, Laura?
Yeah, that's correct.
You know, Kevin, as a developer too, when I did Oakmont, a lot of people use that same argument about, uh, Hempstead, you know? And I said, what possessed you to think that that road wasn't going through? It's a stub road, and a developer owns the property that it's subbed into, I mean.
Joel, Joel, was there a lot of, I wasn't around for this, for Oakmont, but obviously Oakmont's another bypass of Balltown Road. Was there a lot of traffic study concerns in volume similar to this conversation? Do you remember?
Yeah, yeah, I remember it very well, like, like, the back entrance to Oakmont, you know, I acquired that, uh, property from Bud Loopy. You know, that made the development viable, and that's the, that's Oakmont Street, which is Hummingbird, okay? So. The, to reduce the traffic through Hummingbird, we put in that, that island, so people could only take a right turn into Oakmont. And they couldn't take a left into, um, into Oakmont, but. People zoom through that right now, you know, they, they disregard it, so. It, you know, and I, I don't see that many people cutting through Oak, Oakmont, it, like, like all the doomsayers were predicting that. You know, people would be driving from Route seven to Consol, you know, like in, it didn't happen.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but I think examples like that, real life, local street examples. Might help tell the story better than us, and we already have a lot of good data and a lot of good facts, and it may be enough, but. Oakmont, I always thought, when Oakmont was proposed, that, that, the, the residents must stood up in arms and were gonna. Create a, a highway thoroughfare up to the largest mall in the area, you know, and if people were against it, but at the end of the day, I don't take Oakmont. Because it just doesn't make sense, you know?
No, I totally agree. I mean, uh, if you just referenced the public hearings, I mean, there was hundreds of people at Oakmont, you know, so.
Okay. Uh, any other questions or comments regarding, uh, twenty-five thirty-eight River Road? We still got a few, couple things on the agenda to get through. Um, hearing, hearing none, I think we'll, uh, we'll move on the agenda. Joel and, um. Uh, excuse me, Mark, appreciate your time, um, very much. I know it's a, yeah, we appreciate it, all of us appreciate it.
Alright, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on the agenda. Laura, under reports, we got a couple of quick items, um, Ace Hardware, the Z B A result?
Yeah, the Z B A granted the area variance to allow for the greenhouse, and they had some good discussion. Um, I think a lot of it had to do with, you know, the things that we had talked about with the pedestrian connectivity in the town center overlay district. So I had reached out to Ace Hardware to see if they wanted to do a presentation at this meeting, but they're gonna work. A little bit harder on the engineering and some of the comments that we had at the last meeting, and they expect to be in the June eighth meeting, so variance granted. And, um, will likely return on June eighth.
Was that unanimous, Laura? The, the vote from the Z B A?
I believe it was, yeah, yep.
Okay. Thanks, Laura.
Yeah.
Chicken ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I, I know that we have been discussing, um, chicken or hen ordinance. Uh, in, as part of the zoning code amendments, um, but the, uh, town board has been receiving a fair amount of public comment. On chickens related to the COVID closure and how people feel the need to be able to have their own food and be able to reduce their need to go to the store. And, um, so they wanted to look at it, um, and they proposed to actually make a chicken, like a. And it would not be part of the zoning code, like we have chapter whatever dogs. They would probably make a separate chapter for chickens that would govern chickens, and we just have to make sure that it was not inconsistent with the zoning code. Um, and you guys probably noticed they put, uh, survey out to town residents. To see, you know, what the general consensus is or appetite from the town for having a that ordinance. And I think based on, you know, what comes back from that survey and, you know, some, some additional discussions at the town board level. They may just end up making it its own chapter, and then we would just make sure that the zoning cor- uh, ordinance was in conformance. So I just wanted to update that for you guys, if you'd seen the chicken survey out, or you're just wondering, um, that's where it is right now. Well, uh, I'll keep you updated.
So you, Laura, you're saying that from the survey, I actually took it myself, the survey is indicating that we ought to, we ought to do something in some way?
Uh, I don't have the results of the survey yet, so the initiative, I think, was that there was a lot of public comment just saying, like, you really need to look at this. Like, there's, you know, it's time. And I told them that we've been looking at it a lot, and, and, you know, we get very split, and it's difficult, because a lot of you guys have lived through. Um, you know, the lawsuit for chickens and, and, you know, things that have happened in the town that, you know, have been difficult, but. The timing of it and the reasons that people are asking for are different, so the, you know, the town board was looking at ways that they could. Be listening and responsive and helping people during these times and whatever, but, you know. There definitely are counterpoints to all arguments. Um, so I think that it's important to see how many responses we get in that survey and what the overall consensus is from the town. On whether or not they wanna see an ordinance, but I think that you would more likely see it as a chapter than a zoning code amendment. I just wanted to update you guys on that.
A- a- and just to be clear, the people who use the COVID nineteen crisis to couch an argument as to why they would wanna have it. They're strictly just talking about eggs, right?
Eggs, yeah, yeah.
Okay, just wanna make sure, so.
Yeah. Um, I mean, some of the people who've been. Talking about how much they love their chickens as pets, um, but I think the only way that you, they can drag in, those people did not drag in COVID. I'm not drag in COVID nineteen, those people, I think, heard the arguments and were like, we love our chickens, let us have them back. So there's been a couple of people who are like, we love chickens, but the, the, uh, beginning initiative was, you know, we wanna be able to farm and feed ourselves. And be more self-reliant based upon what's happening with the world right now.
Yeah, I hope we would hire a few more animal control officers then.
Yeah, so we actually brought it to, um, the Public Safety Commission, because, um. You know, when we looked at the Albany Code, it named an animal control officer. We are animal, so we actually have a dog warden, it's not an animal control officer, and we were talking about it at Public Safety. If you're bored, feel free to listen to the Public Safety meeting. Um, it was, um, really interesting. It would probably have to be largely enforced by the zoning code enforcement officers, which is the building inspectors. Um, and then if there was a crime, like, uh, animal abuse, or, you know, uh, like a, you know, law violation, then it would be followed up by the police. We don't actually have, uh.
I, 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 I was referring to the wildlife. I was referring to the fact that when we already have coyotes running through our streets. That, you know, that's my, that's, as I said before.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, so we've talked about that before. I think that's why the planning board has really struggled with it before, and I mentioned that. Um, I have mentioned it, I mean, there's, there's upsides and downsides to all of, all things that we do, and there's a lot of sometimes unintended consequences, but. Um, so we'll see, that survey's been out there for a little while, it was in the Gazette, um, and. And anything we do, like, I'll try and keep you guys updated, we have to seriously modi- modify the Albany ordinance, because it's not implementable the way that I had originally brought it to you guys. So it would take some changes, um, regardless, but the discussion's out there, just.
When is, um, when is the survey period closed? Do you know?
I don't actually know. I think it was originally gonna close earlier, but then when the Gazette said that they were gonna run it. It was like, okay, well, now we can reach a wider, wider audience, so we wanted to wait for the Gazette to run it.
I don't know, I don't know, team. I mean, at the end of the day, there's parts of this unit that's zoned for farming, and I think people who wanna raise chickens can. Get some of that property, residential, you know, low-density R ones. R twos, I don't know. It gets a little uh, you know, what's the expectation of those people who move into residential neighborhoods in terms of having chickens, right?
And we had that conversation.
Yeah.
Well, thanks, Laura, and we look forward to hearing the results and continuing the discussion on on chickens. Uh, I did, I have listened to all the meetings and the, and you're right, you know, there, um, it's a, I know the board is split on it, um, and and I think I've uh, I'm on the fence.
No, not intended.
Alright, okay, anything else, Laura, under reports?
No, I'm all set.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna keep it moving here. Been a long night for everybody. Uh, commission business, I'll start with Mr. Oster. Do you have anything for us?
No, thank, no, no, but I anticipated at some point, we're gonna be hearing at the next meeting about the uh, about the co-op in the center of town.
Yep. Okay, um, how about uh Mr. Diopino?
I believe the Architecture Review Board is going to be reviewing the Niskiuna Animal Hospital and the Ace Hardware.
Any other meeting scheduled?
Uh, Clark, are we meeting Wednesday?
I think it'd be best to push it out one more week and then a week from Wednesday.
So.
Okay, a couple of weeks, or a week from Wednesday or so. Great. Anything else, David?
No, that's it.
Okay. How about you, Patrick?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Khan?
Nothing, thank you.
And Mr. LaPlante?
No, sir.
And Ms. Gold, anything?
Nothing.
And Ms. Shenfield?
Nothing.
I have nothing to add. It's been a long night. I just want to thank the planning department, especially Laura, reading about forty pages of public input, which is a good job, Laura. We really appreciate that, and I know the public appreciates it also. Uh, thanks for all that you do, the planning office. Um, anybody have anything else for, I asked for adjournment? Okay, seeing nothing else, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion uh to adjourn made by Mr. Khan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oster. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 You know, that was loud and clear. Any opposed at all? Okay, hearing no one opposed, uh, again, thank you very much, uh, and uh, we'll all be in touch. Long night. Thanks, Laura. Long night.
Thanks, Kevin.
Night, folks.